Change, no public comments will be taken into action participated. Any of the items approved for action by the council tonight will be placed on the October first, twenty twenty five city council meeting agenda, as otherwise determined. All of the council members are here tonight. First, I might need to speak up a little bit. That's what I was gonna say, I was actually gonna recommend for any of our speakers, because we have all these fans running that I think we're gonna have to shout, and if someone shouts too loud, just tell us they've shouted too loud. We'll have, see on your schedule, we're gonna have three agenda bill briefing, A one, two, three, and then approximately five fifteen, we'll go to our community partners for the hybrid shelter presentation, and then resume back again after that presentation with the agenda bill briefing. Finally, an ongoing reminder that questions or comments by the public may be submitted on any item at any time by email, city.council@bremertonward.gov. And Zoom recordings of study sessions will also be available online within a few days following the meeting. First item up tonight, the welcome Mayor Wheeler presenting item A one, which is to amend a motion previously adopted regarding your appointment in Victoria Hill, the Bremerton Housing Authority Board of Commissioners Mayor.
All right, well, thank you. See, you, Council President, you covered, covered what I'm looking for. You've already previously approved Victoria, and so now we're just amending the arrangement based on a change in the bylaw by the Bremerton Housing Authority. Extend her term out to September thirtieth, twenty thirty.
Any questions from the council?
What was it before?
The, the length of her term before.
She was supposed to serve until twenty twenty seven.
Through your term.
Okay, thank you.
Hey, how do we treat this item?
Consent.
Go ahead.
Does this mean that everybody on the Housing Authority Board, is there a staggered timeframe they're up? Or are they all up at the same time? It's staggered, all right, thank you, that's a consent. Thank you.
Send it in. Thank you, Mayor.
All right.
Next up, I'd like to welcome civil engineer three, Chris Dimmitt, present item A two, which is the local agency contract with Sound Pacific Construction LLC for the systemic pedestrian treatment project. And Chris, you're gonna have to explain systemic pedestrian. What's going on there?
But some of us really like the term.
Yeah. Thank you, council, I did have a presentation, but we ran into some technical difficulties with getting that up. But yeah, what we're bringing to council tonight for consideration is the award of contract for the systemic pedestrian treatment project with Sound Pacific Construction. The systemic pedestrian treatment project is installing RRFs at eight different locations throughout the city. It's rectangular rapid flashing beacons, probably seen a couple of those throughout the city. So it'll be in, project is installing eight more of those. We'll install more of those at different locations, at eight different locations. One of those at Warren and Ford, two of them are on Thirteenth Street, one at Benita and one at Chester. We have two more on Perry, which is at Holman Street and at Nolan Way. We have one at Sheridan and Cherry Avenue, and then two on Sylvan Way, at Spruce Avenue, and one at Halvers Avenue.
Wow, Venetia in most of these.
And all these locations will come with curb ramp improvements, similar to what you will see like at an intersection with push buttons for the RRFs. We advertised this project back in August. We got six bids at bid time, and the low bidder, which is Sound Pacific Construction, came in under our engineers estimate at eight hundred twenty-eight thousand, three hundred ninety-seven dollars. So we've done our due diligence in reviewing and analyzing bids and recommend award of the contract to Sound Pacific Construction. The one caveat that I will put in here is that we do need to have wash shock concurrence before we award it, we've submitted that and we're hoping to get that prior to next week's study.
Sorry, you need what?
Wash shock concurrence.
Thank you.
So with that, happy to take any questions.
Jane, was this discussed at Public Works?
It was discussed, but I need some clarification on locations one and two. Are those on Eleventh or on Thirteenth? It'd be the one at Benita.
They're on Thirteenth, there's one right in front of Bremerton High School, and then the other one is adjacent to Olympic Community Hall.
Michael, I was just gonna ask if we have worked with Sound Pacific in the past?
Yeah, no, they've, they've built our East Eleventh and Perry project. They're currently doing the Bremerton Force Main project, so they're, they're very familiar with City of Bremerton.
Hannah and Jennifer.
Thanks. Hi, Chris. Um, I have a question, why, what were the criteria by which you chose these eight intersections?
Four of the intersections came directly out of our twenty twenty city safety plan that we did. So those were direct locations chosen based on analysis by consultant on pedestrian, sorry. It was directly selected based on that citywide safety plan update, and the data out of that suggested that four of the locations where we had existing pedestrian, either injuries or fatalities, and so were, those four locations were selected. The additional four locations were also selected based on their proximity is also making those crossings safer, as well as Bremerton One customer responses that we've gotten over the years.
Okay, I'm asking because one of the submittals I made to this council, which was referred to the Public Works Committee, was the intersection of Fifteenth and Lafayette, which is one of the few areas in my district that has intersecting sidewalks and is about to have sidewalks all along Fifteenth Street fronting the new park. Especially crossing eastwards along Lafayette and worth of Fifteenth, that's quite a tricky intersection. So that was not considered, there haven't been any Bremerton One complaints there? Or not as many as for Fifth Street?
Yeah, that wasn't considered, I know the scope for the project was put together back in twenty twenty, so it was quite, quite some time ago, and I wasn't part of that selection process.
Okay, thank you, I sure wish there was even one of these in my district. Thanks.
Jennifer.
Yeah, and I hope this is your main, but I really appreciated Jane asking about Eleventh Street and Benita, Eleventh Street and Chester, because there's so many people that cross the road there. I know they're not supposed to, but it's a real.
You can cross at any intersection.
I know, and, and it's a four, that's what I was gonna kind of check in about. It's not the safest place for people to cross, but they can, right? And so I see people cross out all the time, but it's, it's so busy, I just wonder, I was surprised that that didn't, was, I mean, you know, I don't see it being as busy on Thirteenth. I mean, there's already enough, I feel like there's enough warning that you're in a school zone for that area.
Thanks. Can I have a discussion with her on that?
Thank you.
Okay, so I'm kind of concerned about those two locations on Thirteenth also. The one at Chester makes sense, because you got that big hill coming up on Forsyth.
I can see that.
But we have a four-way stop sign with flashing stop signs one block away where you're, where they're adding another rapid flashing beacon on Thirteenth. And I know that the school district has requested that we get some more safe crossings for people on Eleventh. I mean, we have one at High, and then you gotta go all the way to the table.
Yeah, it's high, and then you don't have any all the way down. And even people, you know, who might be walking up at college, you know?
Yeah, I mean, there was, there was a serious pedestrian accident at, I believe it was Chester.
Was it in Naval?
No, it was Chester and Thirteenth, and that's why they put the stop signs, and they were supposed to put speed, somehow that went away, speed pushing. That might have been before you were here, because that's what we were being told, public. I'm just.
I, I understand, yeah, I mean, I guess, um, do we have, was there any discussion about Eleventh Street Public Works?
Yeah, that's what I'm gonna jump, sorry, but I think we had already just signed off on this location grant acceptance, but that's correct. Right, we got the grant before this location came up and we agreed in. Now it's back to work.
There's no flexibility in that once you accept the, okay, all right.
Design of ADA grant.
Okay.
I guess, the thing is, so how do we start building the new list? The next go, so I don't, how do we get?
If we ever get the active transportation plan.
Eleventh and Benita.
I will also just add that Eleventh Street is crossing more lanes of traffic, and RFPs are usually not suitable treatment for that length of a crossing.
Exactly.
That's also probably why we didn't.
And that was what I was hoping to have a discussion about too, and getting validation for that. So what are the, what, okay, I would like to have that somehow added to whatever list is appropriate for some pedestrian crossing safety measures. I'm sure Public Works can handle that from here, but I have no issue with this.
Okay, how do we treat this item? Thank you, Mr. Dimmitt.
Thank you.
Item A three, I'd like to welcome Public Works. I will squeeze this one in, I think, yeah. We'll, I'd like to welcome Public Works Operation Manager Ron Moore. With the contract with All Stripes LLC for the long line striping pavement marking project. Mr. Moore, go ahead.
So we have a contract that we have for long line striping and pavement marking. I put it out to bid in August, we had two bidders, All County, All Stripe LLC was the lowest bidder. He, they came in a hundred and twenty-seven thousand dollars under what we have in the budget for it, so I've checked with the three references that they had, which was the city of Bellevue, city of Rin, and Callas County. So I'd like to award them the contract.
Okay, was this discussed in Public Works?
Yes, it was.
Okay, any objections, they're all good?
I think it's all good, because it's not just long lines that they're painting.
Correct.
Because we don't have the ability to, there's enough staff or equipment to do a lot of our pavement mark. It's called long line, but it's basically every.
Long line and pavement markings. They're two separate budget items.
I'm just curious, what long line refers to?
Like edge marking.
Edge lines and centerline marking.
They know there's a, like a distant, better long line. Hannah?
Thank you. So I was talking to Paulsboro City Works, Paulsboro Public Works, which is a town of what, twelve thousand? And even for them, what they are using is a Titan Powerliner four-nine-five-five. They quoted me a cost of about fifteen thousand dollars, that's one five thousand dollars. And when you Google it, you will see many that are less than that. I am wondering why we do not purchase a long line striper rather than having, having this contracted out at over a quarter of a million dollars?
We do have a walk behind striper, but it would be the staff that we would need for traffic control. Paulsboro is area there not as high speeds, because it's more like localized, and we are currently looking into redoing the ILA with the county and seeing if they're able to do the striping as they did before to save the city some money and with that ILA, along with some other work since they're also in a somewhat of a budget crisis. So it would, it would help keep their skills up, but also save the city some money, and then we could be able to do a little bit more with the budget that we have.
So has a financial analysis of this been done? And I'm sorry to, if I sound angry because I'm talking loudly, please forgive me.
I, I don't believe so, I think it, when I came in, it was just, we, it was budget time, and that's what the budget has always been, so that's what we had gone with. It's been, since I believe two thousand eight, when the sign department was kind of taken, taken apart, and there's one staff that it's permanent with the sign staff for the sign shop in traffic, and then we supplement one out of the street department to help.
Didn't council put a second employee for the sign shop into the budget in, I think, twenty twenty-three?
That was before my turn.
Okay. Okay, I just think the fiscally conservative thing to do would be to do this in-house. Public Works has been telling us for a long time that taking things out is usually three times the cost. And, yeah.
Okay, hold on.
Jane?
Thank you. I just want to add to that, though, there's a lot of traffic control that you have to do when you're painting, and we don't have a lot of staff to do it. You'd have to hire more, more staff in able to, in order to do that. It's not, it's not like having two people. It'd be like having six people to do anything because of the amount of traffic control you need to do for long line striping and even thermoplastic for crosswalks and stuff, so.
Isn't traffic control a task typically assigned to summer temporary hires?
I have no idea, and I don't even know if they've been able to hire.
We just were able to hire two seasonal within the last month. No one is applying for the seasonal positions at the current rate that we're offering at the wage.
So, Mr. Moore, from what I'm hearing, and I remember we used to have the ILA with Kitsap County, and that was, I believe it was cheaper. We don't have the economies of scale, what I'm hearing in Bremerton, to do this in-house. We don't have the resources to justify, even though the equipment costs would be relatively low. We don't have the, the people that, to do that at a two eighty a year, two hundred eighty thousand a year. We're gonna have to hire bigger crews in order to do that. It doesn't pencil out on the back of the envelope, it sounds like, but county maybe. So look forward to maybe, well, it can be a couple of years now, right? See, you have something to work on.
Yep.
You heard the concern to the council. Council, how are we gonna treat this item?
Consent.
Consent.
Then it is, thank you, Mr. Moore.
Thank you.
All right, so as promised, next we're gonna pivot here to item B one. I'd like to welcome the CEO of Kitsap Mental Health Services, Ms. Monica Bernhardt, and Bremerton Housing Authority Executive Director Jill Stanton for a presentation on the hybrid shelter update and community partners. Ladies, just a reminder, nice and loud.
Okay, we can do that.
All right.
I know they have a lot of material to get through, so I don't know if we want to hold old questions again, or just.
So I think we're, we're going to play that by ear. What, what would you prefer? Do you want to do the whole presentation? I'm sure you've done a dry run.
You know, I think we would like to do the presentation, we have better dry runs, but if there are questions, you know, that you feel like you need to ask as we're going through, we're, this is simple, we're fairly likely to do it that way. But yeah, we just have a lot to get through, so.
Okay, so we have approximately an hour set aside for this, it's an important matter, but still, you gotta, items on the agenda, so whenever you're ready, we're.
I'm just looking at how I share my screen.
I might be able to help.
Did you, are, are they? I need to, uh.
Are you, are you in the Zoom?
I'm in the Zoom. Here he is.
Another non.
We're gonna promote them to panelists.
Jill's this year. Promote the panel.
Well, yeah.
Yeah, must be yours.
Everybody hear that?
Okay. You've just been promoted, so you should be good.
Okay, so I just care where you should be. So, thank you. Also joining us is three, Medley, she is from Branch Design and is gonna be part of the presentation. So she's been on our team since, pretty much since the beginning, but has now been hired as our architect firm. So I just want to start by thanking all of you for this opportunity to share. I know it's been a long time, and you've been very patient, and hopefully we can explain why some of that has occurred, but bottom line is that this team has been working really, really hard. I want to thank Monica, Joe, Tony, as you know, you know who they're, who they're with, their staff and their boards, who I really feel are the pillars of this community, have supported this project and supported us and for our time, as we've met literally every week. Also, the county, Ed Washburn and Carl Ford, they've also been there the whole time. Jeff Poplin, obviously, as your representative, has served every week, and we've been very appreciative of everything he brought. But I want you to also know that it's beyond the people represented here.
I can't hear you at all.
Oh, you can.
I can hear you, so it's not that, that's probably the distraction by, I think, yeah, was bothering. Counselor Omar.
You know.
Just shut that fan on.
Okay.
Much better.
If it gets too hot, I have a suggestion, we could put one fan there.
This is much better.
This is my.
People just take enough shirts.
I was thanking people. So I just wanted you to know that, though, it goes beyond this group. There's been several organizations throughout this community that have helped us, consulted with us, several shelters, Salvation Army, Eagles Wing, just so many different organizations that have been a part of this, and they're not just in this community, also outside of this community. We've gone to Everett, we've gone to Seattle, Lehigh. People are very excited that Kitsap is doing something to house the unhoused here. They're excited, and they want to help us. And then just finally, I think I have to recognize that there is grassroots organizations, faith-based organizations that have been doing this work for a very long time. And they do it without getting paid. I mean, I get paid, right, it's still my heart, but I'm getting paid. These people are giving their time, their resources, they know their mates, they mourn them when they die, and they have to be recognized, and they have to be consulted. And so I, I want them to know that we hear them and we are grateful to them, and we wouldn't be here today without them. So that's where I'm gonna start. In January twenty twenty-three, we came through you all, and as requested, we provided an option, this hybrid option. We started with this vision, and this vision has not changed, and I thought it would be important for us to revisit today. We said we wanted to work together as a community with our city and our county to provide shelter in Bremerton that provides a pathway to permanent housing developed around individual needs, human dignity, safety and security, and holistic approach to healing and health and overcoming barriers to successfully live in permanent quality housing without causing further trauma with the process. And we have tried to do that, so I hope you can see that today. And Monica is going to take the next few slides, and again, we are happy to take questions, so we can, we can make it a discussion.
Well, hello, everybody, Monica Bernard, CEO of Kitsap Mental Health Services, and I echo Jill's thanks to all of you for even being open to looking at this project. I think we all can look back, two years ago, three years ago, when the downtown core had an explosion of unsheltered homelessness. And it didn't just come out of nowhere, but it certainly, certainly took hold a few years ago. And this community knew something had to be done. You had residents that were concerned, you had businesses that were concerned, you had council members. And so the city, nonprofits, the council looked at this and said, what can be done here? And us, as nonprofit organizations, came together, knowing that not one single entity could solve this problem alone. I want to echo also what Jill said about the Salvation Army. Some of you may know that if you go back ten years, we didn't have a year-round shelter in this community. We had stand-up winter shelters that opened when the weather got cold. And there was a time when we knew we needed to get there, and the Salvation Army stepped in. And they, it was supposed to be a short-term option, and it became an option year after year after year, and they really deserve our deepest gratitude as a community. They saved lives over this past decade, and I, I want to echo and acknowledge that. But their system was never designed to be a long-term, low-barrier shelter where people could stay on a continuous basis, not have to check out in the morning and not have to check in at night, having onsite services. That is what's really needed in this community. If we are going to move, help people move from a place of despair and unsheltered homelessness to a place of stability, and perhaps even, you know, in the ideal scenario, people move into a more permanent housing solution. So that is what got us here, and that's why the nonprofit organizations came together, because we each have our respective expertise. You know, we run housing at Kitsap Mental Health Services, but our specialty is providing, you know, mental health and substance use treatment services. Jill runs housing, their specialty is in development. KCR's specialty is in, in housing and employment and Head Start. And then St. Vincent de Paul has a strong history of running shelters in this community. So between these four anchor agencies, what you have is individually, each of these agencies brings decades of experience to this problem. And I think what I want to leave you with is this understanding that we're drawing from that expertise. We're, we're not just coming at with this idea of maybe this'll work. We are, we are really pulling on that, and we know that really any solution that we choose needs to be a continuous day, where people do not have to check out at the end of the day. They need to have access to onsite services, and they need to have access to pathways to permanent housing and mental health and substance use treatment services. So we had two tasks ahead of us. First and foremost was to find a location that was suitable for this, but simultaneous with that was also identifying what does our funding plan look like? So location, this is really critical. Sometimes there's this thought, well, why don't we, you know, folks that are unsheltered, why don't we put them way over there? And the reality is, they are part of our community. We need a response, we need a solution for them in our community, but we need one that doesn't keep them isolated. We need a location that is close to transit. We need a site that is large enough, not just to put a shelter, but to be able to make a sense of community that has safety measures and security measures in place. We need it to be a location that facilitates service provision, not just by Kitsap Mental Health Services, but potentially by Panis of Community Health Services, bringing their medical van, for example, or other community providers. We need something close to utilities, and it's very important, even though we're gonna be providing food onsite, you know, at, we need, there's gonna be transitional housing and, and ultimately long-term, even some permanent housing we're looking at for this site. We need access to food and access to education and workforce resources, and parking, as you know, is, we always, I used to think we didn't need as much as we do, but, you know, with all the service providers and everybody else's staff coming and going, parking is really an issue as well. So it, we had a lot of, we had a lot of requirements for this site. We looked at a number of sites, and for a number of reasons, we weren't able to go in that direction. But we think we found a site that will be, I think, very well-suited for the requirement. But we think we found a site that will be, I think, very well-suited for the requirements we just laid out. And Jill will talk about that.
Yeah, thank you. So, no, okay. So, yeah, as Monica said, we were incredibly intentional in finding a site. And as much as my husband and I are going to miss running around on the weekends looking at sites, I'm glad to have this behind us, but it took a long time, right? And we found this site. It's, I think, most of you know, but it is in District 2. It's right off Sheridan and Wheaton, five acres. And it's been for sale for a very long time. So we know it's not the perfect site, but I got to tell you, I don't know that there is a perfect site. We have options, and I think that this is a good one. It will serve, it can serve what we need right now, but it also preserves land that can serve as affordable housing into the future. And having a housing authority own this land ensures that it will be used for that in whatever capacity. So, you know, once we found this land, we began this negotiation process with the seller that was, had challenges that we were not anticipating. Usually, you make an offer, you charter accepted, you buy it, you use it for the purpose you want to use it for. That was not the case with this seller. This seller wanted to ensure that certain things, that activities on this land either happened or didn't happen. In the end, while that process took a lot of time, I also want to say this seller wanted to be a part of this project, which was very cool, because we didn't at first go into that thinking that they would. But Monica really led this part of explaining what we were trying to do as a community, with our county, with our city, with each other, basically with our entire community. And they wanted to be, of course, we had a great idea of how they could do that. So we started talking about, you know, the funding challenges. And we initially asked them to donate the property, and they were open to that with the people that we were talking to. But in the end, I think, for various reasons, they decided that wasn't an option. But instead, they deeply discounted this. So we're going to go over those numbers. But, you know, I just wanted you to know that this process took so long. And while we are trying to have as much transparency as we possibly could, we didn't have anything to share until we had something to share. Where we're at now is we have a signed purchase and sale agreement. We have been working through all of the diligence, and it's significant. But we're nearing the end of that. We haven't found anything that would stop us from going forward. And we believe that this property will close in early November, if not sooner. Once the seller has a 30-day waiting period, but they can waive that. We, as a housing authority, are comfortable that we're ready to move forward. There's a couple last-minute questions we're waiting to have answered, but we haven't run into any problems. And so we're ready to do that. Some of the things that we have, that we know are required for site development, we've already started. So that's the pipeline for the property. And before we kind of show you a possible vision for this, I want to talk about the money. So this is the shelter capital cost. Land acquisition, the property was appraised at $2.4 million. Land development, we're estimating about $2 million. The tiny home community part of this, we're estimating at about $1.4 million. And then the small congregate shelter piece, we're estimating about $1 million. So total of $6.8 million. We will talk more about this, these are initial estimates, and they're contingent on, you know, some pretty important decisions that will have to be made by both us and the city as we move forward. But these are the capital classes we're estimating them today. And these are the resources that we have. You might remember when we started this, the city had $1.3 million allocated, and the county had $1.5 million allocated. Since that time, as I mentioned earlier, the seller had agreed to discount the price by $900,000. And then we were awarded in 2025 round of SIA funds, $1.5 million primarily for the tiny home, call it, community shelter. And then the state, the state has a program, it's called Land Acquisition Loan Funding. And we were very excited about that. In fact, when we thought we were going to get the land donated, they were disappointed because they wanted to be a part of it. We were not disappointed, but we were like, okay, because this is a loan. It does have to be paid back, but it's got very good terms. 1% interest rate, you don't have to make payments for a number of years. You have time to figure that out. So we believe that that was a good option. The VHA board commissioners agreed to take on that liability. And we have completed the application, and the application has been approved. So with these resources, they add up to $6.7 million. Unfortunately, we were not awarded SIA funds in the 2020, in the last round. We are applying for public interest fund capital money, so we'll see. But we feel like if our estimates are anywhere close, our resources are equally close. And we're not worried about getting this shelter built, as far as money is concerned. I think the next, you know, slide talks about operations. So operations was not, the operational funding, I should say, was not. For shelters, it's different than affordable housing, where we have rental income coming in, so we can project well into the future what funding for operations and others would like. That's not the same for a shelter. A shelter gets funded on an annual basis, sometimes two years, and you apply for it as you get closer to that. So while it certainly has been a stress, it hasn't been something that we could really have a big plan for until now. Till now, when we finally are at the point that we can see this being built, and someone's going to need to operate it, and there's going to be costs associated with that. Our shelter is similar to other shelters, but different. It is different. So in estimating what this would cost, we did a few things. We reached out to other shelters, primarily Everett Gospel Mission and Lehigh, and we were provided with their costs of Brian, very similar shelters. We have Pendleton Place, we have Everland Brightsgar, we have Salvation Army, we have Kitapp Rescue Mission, so we have some local shelters that we were also able to draw upon and see what their costs were. And so we are estimating, we have details on this, but this is, you know, high level, that it could cost up to $3 million annually to rent this shelter. What you get with that is quite some security, onsite staffing, food, site costs like utilities, insurance, building maintenance, landscaping, that moving. And then none of the four organizations that are here represented tonight will be the operators of the shelter. We will have a separate operator. We've already got an RFP ready to go out. We have people that have expressed interest, but there will need to be oversight over that operator. So funding to do that will be included in that. So that's the cost. I also just want to point out, though, that other things that Monica mentioned have to be a part of the shelter. Services, Kitapp Mental Health Services, and then select community health services. We need coordinated entry. We need foundational community support. We need the voucher program, right? The voucher program that we explained when we first started this, where we actually take referrals from the shelters and we clear shelter beds, that already started. That's been going for well over a year. And last year, in a six-month period that we analyzed, we cleared 33 beds out of our local shelters. The people were ready for housing, but they just needed the voucher. We were able to do that. In addition to that, organizations that maybe don't provide the typical shelter that we're all used to, but like Eagles Wing is a very good example. They provide housing, shared housing, and that. And they have people that are also ready for independent living. And so they partnered with us, and we were clearing their beds. And so this was working on a scale that was, it's almost unbelievable. Traditionally, the vouchers are issued through a waitlist. So we open a waitlist, everybody applies, and then we just draw names. People have a lot of support, so it's very low success rate when you do it that way. In this six-month period that we looked at, we drew over 800 people off the wait. And of those 800 people, we housed 40. We got about 190 referrals from our partnering agency. We housed 88 of those people. So that worked, and it's, I mean, I can't believe it when I saw the numbers. So part of what we're saying in this hybrid model, I don't want to misstate it, permanent housing is, needs to be front and center on this. It has to be a piece of this. And so as your housing authority, we're committed to that, and we're always. And for our service providers, right, Kitapp Mental Health Services, they are not included in this $3 million operation, but they are including their services in there. So is Pines for Community Health Services and many other organizations, KCR, doing the things that they're already funded to do so that this shelter is not burdened with additional cost of the services. It's a gift to this community. And I've never really seen partnerships like this anywhere that I've been before. So potential, obviously, we don't have everything worked out for how we're going to get this $3 million. That's part of what we're here to talk about. We know that in our county, there is a county shelter bed rate. And it varies depending on the type of bed that it is. So we will get that. The shelter will qualify for that. It'll probably bring in somewhere between $600 and $1 million a year for that. So that's there. That's a great start. Well, obviously, every year, the operators and VHA and St. Vincent de Paul will be responsible for going after funding, whether, you know, whatever we qualify for. CM may be, I'm not sure exactly if that will cover operations yet, but certainly, mental health county funding at the 1/10th of 1%. Those are some of the options we have in this county. We are very much, you know, hoping that the city of Bremerton will have an annual contribution, and possibly the county may be able to also have something in addition. And then there's the State of Washington Commerce Grants that we'll be looking at. And then obviously, you know, our legislators have to be a part of this. And we are willing to seek out their help. And one of the things that we're really need from the city is the city to also seek out their help and to advocate for this shelter and this model, whether it's our, you know, local state or our federal representative. So we'll go after that. Charitable contributions. Tony Ives has been working, you know, heavily on that. He might have some money out there, bigger, small, they will take it all. And then the Department of Health also has some money that we will seek after. So.
All right, go ahead.
Yeah. So Kitapp County and the city of Bremerton contributed fairly equal amounts at the beginning of this, but I noticed that Kitapp County is not on your potential resources for operations.
Well, the shelter bed is the county.
Okay.
And also, the SIA funding is flowed through the county. And the mental county shelter bed, 1/10th of 1%, is also flowed through the county. Now, obviously, we'll assess more, but that is the county fund that is already there, you know, so.
Are these funds that would be paid to any shelter anywhere in the county?
Yes.
The shelter bed rate, yeah, we run shelters based on the shelter bed rate. So depending upon whether you're low-barrier shelter or whether you're continuing to stay, whether you're navigating, some of them are all different bed rates. They're comparable to a lot of bed rates throughout the state. And then they're non-competitive, so we primarily, we fund shelters first, and then what's left over will go to services. But the shelters are always prime for funding.
This is similar to paying for incarceration?
I would not have answered that question.
No, I mean, it's a similar process. Okay, yeah.
Carl, is there capacity to add this to that program? Or is it going to take from somebody else? Do you know what I'm saying? Like.
No, we've already included, we've already included permanent shelter in our funding for the year. And so, and we want to make sure that it's all equal based on the number of beds. So it does, you know, like for the civic building, they have 75 beds. Salvation Army has 90 beds, so they're based on the bed rate for that. So it's equal within the size of.
Thank you.
Denise?
First round, right?
Well, we saw the presentation.
That, the bed rate money, does that come simply from county sources or many residents and taxes and all of that, or does that come through the state?
That comes through the state, that's consolidated.
State funding.
The Department of Commerce.
State funding. So.
Okay, Jennifer, and then we're going to let the presentation continue.
Sure, so for clarity. So that county shelter bed rate is also the same as, would there be different State of Washington Commerce grants you're applying for outside of the bed rate? Right? And then Department of Health additional bed allowance, that's completely in addition, right? Okay. And the SIA funding, you said you weren't in the 2026 round? Is that what's your thing?
I'm so sorry. I applied for operations. We applied for capital, but we were really applying, hopefully pay back that last loan from the state. But our backup plan was, if our cost overrun, we were going to go back to the county and thinking we use that round of funding to, you know, to supply gas funding for cost overrun. But yeah, but we didn't get a word of that.
Sorry about that. Okay. All right. Thank you. That's all.
And so I think that's kind of what we want to share about spending. We're going to just briefly talk about the next steps for operations and outreach, and Monica's going to speak to that.
In parallel with all the work that we've been doing, there was also work to develop an RFP and a model for operating the shelter, looking at what the staffing models were going to look like, what kind of security we're going to have on site, the meal programs, all of that. And it was consolidated into a request for proposal that is ready to go. So Joe Crane from St. Vincent de Paul took the lead on that. And so that is really the next step in operations, is once we have, you know, we're ready to say go, we're going to start the RFP process for operations. Outreach is equally important here, and it's something that we actually have some significant experience with. When we launched Pendleton Place, in fact, it opened in 2022. We had a significant outreach effort. I will forever be grateful to the city for the support that they gave us, the mayor, the support that he gave us. That was really important as part of that outreach. So not only did we look at what did other organizations do and how do we learn from them? Because we absolutely did that. But our plan going forward is to be really intentional in terms of doing direct outreach, going to district meetings, hosting an open house, as many as we may need so that people can come and get their questions answered, potentially putting up a website. Our intention, and we recognize, that the community's going to have questions, and we want to be there to answer those questions. When we did this kind of an outreach for Pendleton Place, it was really beneficial that we had representatives from the city planning department were there. Then, a now chief of police, but he wasn't then, and he came there. So when people had community questions about public safety, some of those questions could be answered. We had the architect there, and so we stayed as long as there were questions. And that is our intention here. We really want to be transparent in our timelines, in our methodology, in our operating model. So outreach is going to be an incredibly important part of our process now, going forward, once the funding is secured. So as we've been moving forward in parallel on all these different levels, we've also been moving forward on design, so that once we have the funding, we're ready to go with that. And so Jill, would you introduce Bree?
Yeah, absolutely. So as I mentioned, we hired Bree Medley probably a few months ago now to kind of build what this could look like. So we still have to do a community impact analysis. This could change, but it helps us. It's helped our board, and we hope that it helps you to really see the potential of what this could look like. Bree, I'll let you introduce yourself, and then.
Sure. My name is Bree Medley. I'm with Brand Design Group. I've been in.
I've been involved in this project since the very get-go, before it even was a project. So I just want to also take one moment to, again, thank city council as a community member for looking at this and saying, we want a solution to helping house the unhoused versus a Band-Aid and just a place to put people. That has been the constant as we have been going through, looking for parcels, looking at properties, looking at buildings. Because the, the, at the forefront of this is dignity. It is making sure that this process is different than anything we've seen, changing the narrative associated with shelter. People have an idea of what a, an emergency homeless shelter is based on what they see down on Sixth. And understanding that Salvation Army has been doing everything they can to fill a stopgap that they are not set up to do. What we want to do now is we want to change what that looks like and what people think of when they think of an emergency shelter in this area specifically. So while we've been looking at parcels, one of the big things is making sure it's not jammed in there. And it's, it, it, it doesn't feel like it's an afterthought. We want to make sure that this feels like a community, that people walk by and aren't scared of it. They welcome this in their community. And to everyone's point here, community outreach is going to be very important. Understanding all of the groups who work with people currently experiencing homelessness as well as the community that this shelter will be in, making them feel not only comfortable with this, but proud that this is in their neighborhood. The parcel that we have found gives us a really large breadth to work with because of the size of it. There was some discussion about being able to further develop this in the future with five acres. We don't need five acres. But what this gives us is the ability to buffer, provide some protection for both the people within the shelter, in the community, as well as the greater community at large. We don't have to be right against streets. We get a pullback, we get to plant this out, we get to make it feel very open and very inviting, a soft place to land for those who are coming in, but also a soft place to walk by and feel, feel comfortable as they're going by this. So in this location on Sheridan at the intersection of Wheaton, the idea was to put emergency shelters closer to the more busy intersection, away from the adjacent residential spaces, closer to the gas station, the SARS, the, the more commercial type feeling. But it also has a natural barrier and buffer that exists there right now with all of the natural landscaping that is there. We intend to build on that. So it, it's not necessarily something you're looking into. It feels like a very natural space. And then providing sort of a, a break between that and the tiny home village that we are creating. That starts to finger into the community a little bit more. There are a lot of elements associated with this parcel that are really wonderful. There are also parts of this parcel that are going to prove very, very difficult. The city, you got, part of the comprehensive plan has a dedicated right-of-way hope for this parcel so that there can be connection to Wheaton Way. This, this element could provide a very nice barrier between what would be the transitional housing to more permanent housing that would be right up against the existing residential developments that are there. So it really does create this beautiful continuum of housing that has been the cornerstone of this, this whole entire development. One of the other elements associated with this parcel that will be slightly difficult, part of it is the size of it and requirements associated with development standards. Oh, I was like. I like hearing myself behind myself. Sorry, well, I'm going to continue with the touchy feely and then we'll go into some of the few, the additional issues coming up. A few items that we are looking to have here is lovely outdoor spaces for the community so that while they are living in this space, whether it is for three days or three months, they have a place to call their own, creating outdoor spaces both for recreation, but also for pets, for creating their own dynamic and a place to, to call home versus a place to call a bed. The idea being, oh, sorry, the idea being you do want to come here, very kind of low, soft lighting, not something big and bright and, like, if you will, feeling like a place you'd like to, to stop for a while. Having bike racks, creating planting areas, creating outdoor sitting areas. The idea being this feels like a park when you are in it. And from the street, it also feels that way. But again, a place where you, even at night, if this is when you are entering, you feel really comfortable and really welcome and very safe. But as I mentioned, a large buffer from the street because we do have a lot of space, providing that, that feeling of, of protection for everybody from that standpoint. So one of the things that we are coming up against with this parcel does have to do with the comprehensive plan and this parcel being part of the Harrison Heights Subarea Plan. There are a lot of development requirements associated with it. And based on the size of the site, we will have to come in and we would have to deal with some zoning design review board deviations, as well as for the development standards, as well as the design standards. The other part is this parcel is not included in the temporary encampment zoning language change that we just did. So it, the pros and cons, we, we weighed them over the course of looking at all of these parcels. And our hope is that city council can help us a little bit here and just, and have a discussion associated with a amendment to the comprehensive plan and possibly remove this parcel from the Harrison Heights Subarea Plan and move it to either the DCC or general commercial. I'm not sure what that looks like, but it's, you know, we're going to, we're going to ask the questions and, and see where they land. If we don't ask, we know what the answer is. So that's one of the items. That will help streamline the timeline associated with getting this project through the permitting process because that is one of the longest lead times that we are going to be dealing with. Has to do with DRB review and deviations of both development and design standards, as well as the zoning code language change. The city has consistently been on our side to help us with timelines and they have very much streamlined our ability to get through some of this stuff. And so we, and we, they have already met with us on multiple different occasions to review pre-submitting questions, seeing where we can land on things and, and working with us to try and find different options and how we might approach these elements. And we, we are going to ask city council to also do that with us. Another part of this that is going to be a, not only a timing element, but also a financial impact is the Public Works requirements for frontage improvements. We're hoping to work with Public Works and the director to mitigate, given how much frontage this property does have, minimizing the cost of having to update all of the street frontage in exchange for some of this right-of-way dedication. So working with the city as our, our community partner, as yet another community partner to get this built. Because again, the more money we put towards frontage, the less money we have towards operations or towards the development of these elements. And I know that that is the most important part is providing a really, really safe, wonderful space and transition into permanent housing. Yeah, we can talk about timelines.
Yes, a question. So the timeline that you're presenting.
Yep.
Is that based on the city trying to take this lot out of, out of the comp plan? Out of the Harrison Heights?
Not, no.
So.
This is, this is based on us having to go through a zoning code amendment change for the language, going through DRB, going through the standard site plans. It, it doesn't have planning being done until August because that's when the zoning code amendment changes. We would be running a little bit at risk with some of our permitting from the standpoint of the tiny home village can be separate from the pallet or from the shelter itself. So this is, it's a very aggressive schedule. Do not get me wrong, I am, I'm going to push as hard as I can to get as much leverage as I can with the city. They've been great. We're going to assume they're going to continue that. But we will be using a lot of review and permitting time running concurrently and not consecutively, which is the safe way to approach this. And that's why this currently is assuming that this stays within the Harrison Heights Subarea Plan. That said, there's a lot of caveats to that because if someone says absolutely not, you have to have that FAR requirement, this project's done. Because we can't, we can't develop that.
So FAR?
It's a point four five minimum floor area ratio development for the site and the five acre site at this moment in time. Again, we have a lot of opportunity here with the right-of-way to split this. And it's a wonderful element with being able to provide the city with the intent for the Harrison Heights Subarea Plan, keeping a pedestrian element, creating that natural connection from Wheaton to Sheridan and minimizing the size of the site. But for us, that, that FAR is going to be a pretty hard sell for us to be able to, to get it to work on the site. But yeah, floor area ratio. Okay, do we, I, again, one thing, the development standards can be deviated from and the design review board can allow us a deviation from that.
And I think we, I think that a lot of these agencies and organizations and boards and are going to be in your corner and wanting to do what we can to facilitate this, one hundred percent. I mean, we don't really have any other option because when do our shelters close? May? They close in May. I'm really concerned. I think we're going to need to investigate a moratorium on our anti-canting ordinance in light of this. And so I, I, I'm hoping that maybe you'll be advocating for that as well because our folks will be out there. And I don't want council to consider that. My questions are regarding the zoning, is there a way that we can expedite that a little quicker?
That is, that is expedited. That's how quickly it went through last time and that's half time of what it typically takes.
How long did it take for our last?
Hundred and eighty, hundred and eighty-three days.
Okay.
Oh, sorry, one sixty-five. It was anticipated one eighty-three.
Okay.
And expedited.
If it's okay, I'm just going to take the floor for a minute. I'm going to give it up to y'all who have been involved in it. I'm just, I'm new to this, so I'm just getting up to speed. Tell me why you chose the closet hut model instead of a stick frame building? Yeah, I mean, I, yeah, tell me about that.
Cost, speed. They, it is, it is built somewhere else that can be done, not on site. They're exceptionally fast to go up. The costs of them are quite small in comparison to other.
It's a lot like the other presentation. And this, I mean, this is very respectful, but it's like what the mayor presented, right? But exactly.
We are still using the closet, yes and no. It's a different structure and the interior is wildly different.
I would love to see what the inside is going to look like. Because I think some folks were concerned about it. I think the interior of the previous design was much better than having mats on the floor like Salvation Army has now.
These will have pods, these will have pods within it. But again, we have not done the design for this mainly because we need to understand what we can and can't do. We don't want to get so far over our skis that we have designed something and then we find that we can't.
And you're going to give us that, you're going to do all that for us.
Hundred percent.
We're going to see the inside of it.
You're going to see, you're going to see a walkthrough of it.
And so the closet hut is different inside. I just, is it, is it going to have a metal roof or is it going to be cloth roof? Tell me about the roof.
Man, the exterior will be, it'll be metal on the faces of it. They will have a, a nice designed facade, so there'll be some wood, there'll be glass, there'll be doors, there'll be trellises on the exterior that provide entry.
I guess I want to make sure that we're going to have a good plan for, I've seen, like, there's a closet hut and y'all love the closet hut in Evergreen Park. How many different people have been in that closet hut? I think even Simon Tours started up in there and he said he hated it because it kept dripping down from the metal ceiling onto the peep. So I don't want.
We have to meet, sure, we have to go.
We're most.
We have to meet current building codes.
Yes, okay.
Like, this, this will be fully finished on the interior. It's not going to feel like an old airplane hangar on the inside. It will have drywall, it will have air conditioning, it will have heating, beautiful lighting, the whole thing.
You're, she's so prepared for our questions, just super ready for this. I just want to make sure that our folks that are in there are going to have a good, I mean, we are increasingly going to need not only heat, but air conditioning.
Absolutely.
I just want to make sure that those folks are going to be comfortable regardless of the construction style of this. And then it looks like you've got that set to go first. And I just want to, and I have to do my due diligence because it's something I brought up recently. But I just know that when I go to SARS, I say about once or twice a week, I find deer crossing the road right over at that gas station from that parcel. We have to stop at that intersection and wait for these deer to pass. And then sometimes they separate and they run across, they run across. And so I want to know if you're going to have a wildlife mitigation plan for this site as well?
We do not know yet.
Okay. But you will probably mitigate the wildlife so that we don't have the.
If we need, we'll be doing, we're doing trip reports. I can ask and see if they'll put some deer trips in there as well. They won't do that.
Well, and you're going to have, you're going to have raccoons there. So if you have a low barrier shelter with pets, you're going to need to take care of the pets to make sure little pets aren't going to have raccoons that are going to eat their little pets.
And again, it's not going to be a free-for-all for all of the animals just hanging out outside. This will be, it's going to be a fully fenced-in community.
People are going to be walking around. There's probably going to be, you're going to find that this is going to be a space where people are going to camp near as well. Theoretically speaking. So I just, I just want us all to be aware of what this, this, there's a holistic thing. It's not just inside your complex. It's on the outskirts that we need to mitigate for as well. Wildlife mitigation, camping mitigation, we need to mitigate for all kinds of things. I know, and I know Denise is going to have, Denise has really taken on the burden of our affordable housing and, and District Two, and, and I know she stands ready to support in the ways that she can. And I can't wait to support you, Denise. And I'm really grateful for the work that y'all have done and the networking and the collaboration and this beautiful synergy that you've created in this. And so thank you for your hard work, everybody. And we're all in it together. So don't feel like the questions I'm asking are an attack.
And these are all fair questions.
Okay.
I really, we are here to answer those questions. And I will tell you very quickly, if I don't know, I will say I don't know and I will.
Jennifer, one more question. And then this was the last slide except for the, let's let them finish their presentation.
Oh, I apologize.
Well, and we're already in an hour.
Yeah. And then, so did y'all do anything like an RFP for your design, for your architect? Okay, okay, thank you, that's it.
Again, floor's yours.
So, yeah, I think we're at the end, really. I just, I do want to say that this does require, we're talking about the camping around the site. We're very, very concerned about what happens outside of this site. And we want to work and we will need to work very closely with the police department.
And the school district.
And the school district. We've talked with the school district, we've talked with the library, we're through. And we'll be talking about the police department. We've had some initial talks, but we're not, we're not saying let's just pick up what we see now outside of Salvation Army and move it. That's not what we're trying to do here. And we believe that accountability is, has to be a part of this. And so we're committed to that and we need the city's help with that. And, you know, we are committed to this neighborhood. You know, we, we already have our unhoused living with us right next door. So it's going to happen, but it's going to be way better for them and it's going to be way better for our community. That's, I just, and Andy, I think I'm going to turn it over to Monica, she's been in our A community for a lot longer and I have. And this is not a new thing for us. But it's, we think it's time.
I grew up here, product of the Bremerton schools and been involved in these issues for a long time. This is the kind of model we looked at probably eight years ago. But the community wasn't quite ready for it back then. And I think the time is now. And we also know that it works. I mean, while this is a shelter and it's a continuous day shelter, we've seen that it works at Pendleton Place. Of the seventy-two people that moved in, we only had over the course of three and a half years, only eight evictions. And other than that, we've had people that have connected with long-term services. We've had people that have stabilized their health. We have people that have moved on to better housing. A supportive wraparound service model works. And it's going to take all of us, we're all in this together. And I just really appreciate the commitment of this community, the commitment of the county, the commitment of, of all of our partners to make this happen. So we're excited to work with you guys.
And that is the end.
Now, thank you. Now we'll open up questions and we'll extend past our hours. We'll go Jennifer, her first round. We'll do Anna and then Denise. And every council member will get one round and then we'll get our time and see if we can, we need to do a little more time to get on.
It seems like a very normal protocol. I'd like to.
Um, I'd like to address the scariest part of what came up a few minutes ago, which is, Carl, uh, when we were on the five-year homelessness meeting earlier today, you were, you assured us that Salvation Army will still be open when construction is, is planned to begin. Did I remember that accurately?
Yes, that's what it was, Captain Dana and.
Okay.
The fact that moving forward, they will stay open until their shelter is open ready to go.
Good, because that really got my heart rate going. Um, and really, I have almost no questions except to say what a ton of work. Um, on, when you were saying up to three million dollars a year for operating costs, what's the low end of that number?
It's a hard question. I mean, I, I don't need to know. I, I feel like maybe, I don't say half any part, two million for sure. Um, but I think as high as three million is the safe, smart way to do, don't want to do this wrong.
Okay. Um, and then the Salvation Army, that was my scariest one. Uh, the, the other thing is have you run this design past, um, other people who have lived in, um, shelters like this? And they're okay with the basketball court being right next to the covered, um, the covered outdoor shelter?
So I'm, I'm just going to.
Among other things.
No, 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 no. I, I think, no, we have not. This was, this was really meant from the standpoint of a feel. Um, and it was a very early, um, rendering, just, just to give an idea of how much space there was to have between these buildings. Things weren't shoved together. Um, there's a lot of work that we need to do with the site planning. And since we have received finally some, some feedback from the city, um, as it relates to the pre-submital conference, we will be making some decisions as to how that wants to, um, fully be fleshed out. Um, and, and we will be taking some, some feedback from some community members as to the things that might be the best approach for certain elements. And again, I think we also want feedback from the community. Is there parts of this parcel that the community would like to develop for, to your point, a park or something along those lines? Because we are not going to have, I, I, I'm not saying within that space, that this is a large parcel is what I'm saying. I'm not saying this is going to be a community basketball court.
Side joke.
Okay. Oh, sorry. I was like.
She's gunning for a park.
I'm known for my park.
Yeah. My point being, there's a lot of land and what we're doing is creating buffers and what do those buffers look like? And so having some community feedback is something we absolutely want to get into. That said, we had to have something a little bit more concrete to be able to start that conversation. Otherwise you get seventy-seven chefs in a kitchen and you get no meal at the end of it, right? So again, we will be looking to community feedback for, for how we approach certain elements. Um, we, we also have a lot of people who have a lot of history in this. And so working from all of those different angles is going to be very important for us. And again, to your point, Jennifer, you will be seeing the, you'll be seeing all of these. We just don't want to get so far down the road that we've got full designs and we're like, well, psych, we can't use those and we just wasted all kinds of time and money. So this was just for an initial knee jerk reaction to a planted out sort of landscape space and understanding what those really look like will, will come to fruition later.
Look, let me try asking the question again. Um, perhaps I was unclear. Have you run this design past people who have lived in similar?
I, I meant that from a community standpoint. Yes, I, 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 the end user, yes.
Okay.
That would, that will be considered a part of this.
Okay. Um, that sounds great. I probably if it were another fifteen degrees cooler in here, I'd have another couple dozen questions, but as it is, thank you so much. This is really a ton of work and whoever was doing your fundraising and grant writing, I congratulate you all.
Um, I'm, I represent my district in this conversation and, uh, um, I know that parcel well. And, uh, I was disappointed when it was selected. Um, I had other aspirations, not a park actually, but housing. Um, got great view. Worth a lot of money and, uh, um, and thinking about what could have been developed on there and the loss of that. Um, but it wasn't sold. It wasn't right. So all of that is part of, of business. But as I said, I represent District Two. Uh, this is the first tonight that they're hearing about the location. I have not had a district meeting because I have been waiting to get approval to let my constituents know where it's going to be. And so we, we'll need to do that, but word is out now. And the prevention mitigation is not going to be part of that equation. And that's unfortunate. The timing of this, um, that's another element of misfortune. When you look, I just commend you all for the work you've done on this. Um, it's much more extensive than I expected, certainly just me personally. Um, the design, which is of course important, um, I want the shelter built. I want the people who are living out on the streets to have a shelter. And I'm disappointed it's taken this long and I need to say that as a council person. I understand, I understand the reasons, but I'm very disappointed. I also know that there was a shitload of money that came through that started a lot of new programs. And that your agencies are shouldering that on top of what you used to do. And now you're going to shoulder this. So I want to tell you, I understand the responsibility that you feel. I really do. It's, it's been frustrating for us. I, I get triggered when I see words like city driven. Um, uh, because I think as our council president pointed out, once we hand this over to you, it's yours. Okay, so it's, it's, the city hasn't been driving. Um, uh, we want to support it. I want it done, maybe before I leave council, you know? That'd be nice. So my frustration is evident in the choice of, of lots right across the street from the brand new elementary school. There's two elementary schools on that property now.
I don't know exactly.
It's right across the street. Sheridan, if you drive by the shelter will be on the right. There's the, uh. Your head, yeah. We're heading away from three.
It's where they used to land the helicopter.
I wonder if you hold the Google Maps maybe?
Here. Okay.
The ball field, Legion Field is right across the street and then the new, yes.
But not behind SARS.
No. It's across from.
It's across Sheridan.
It's that.
South of Sheridan.
Yeah. Yeah, sits across the street. I believe our Oyster Bay was across the street too. Um, a street, especially with the rapid flashing beacon now going to be installed on Cherry, uh, isn't that difficult, you know, to get across? I, I want to support this. Um, I'm looking at the three million and saying, wow, that's a lot more than the YWCA's budget, but I know it's a different animal. And I know that you'll be careful with that. I trust you. I trust you. Um, uh, I really do. And, uh, I want to support you. When we start talking about, uh, piece meal zoning, taking a piece out of a plan, that's what happened with Evergreen Point. Sound familiar? Um, so let's be prepared for that. That's one element of that is what we call spot zoning. Okay, there's going to be some backlash. There's going to be some pushback on that. We need to be prepared for it. I'm really, uh, sad, uh, that, uh, we don't have anyone, I don't think, from DCD here.
Yep.
But we don't have our finance director here. And we don't, well, we have Chance, don't we? Do we still have Chance? Yeah.
Hi.
Um, we talk about design standards, you know, and it, but when, when I'm thinking of my constituents wanting to welcome this new aspect of our community, because that's what I've been wanting to do, is build support for this within our community. It's going to be harder now. Um, so when we start asking about that, we're going to need to make sure that nothing gets compromised. If we need a bike lane on that street, we're putting in a bike lane. You know, if you need sidewalk improvements, yeah, that's part of the deal. It's part of the deal. Can we help with that? And I hope Chance will, you know, our director, you know, whatever we can, we could do ourselves, that, that, that's great. But don't make me tell my constituents that they're not going to get the same level of service because of this than anywhere else. I won't, I won't do that. I can't do that in all, in all honesty. So I'm going to be very interested, uh, in seeing, uh, not necessarily, I've, I've seen a lot of this. You know, I know that, that, that the model, I, you know, all of that. Um, again, you know, looking on the outside and we want privacy, you know, for our folks there. Uh, obviously security, you know, that's going to cost money, but, um, I just want to say to whoever's, uh, uh, listening, um, as Councilmember Chamberlain just said that, uh, we're, we're, this is it. We don't have any choice. We really don't. If we want a shelter in the next year, year and a half, this is it. And that's not a good place to be. That's not a good place to, to feel. So, um, I hope that our city will work more closely with you now that things are really, you know, getting real. And I'm sure that council is going to do whatever we can, um, you know, to support you and most importantly, our houseless community. That's the bottom line. So, um, you know, how many lives have been impacted or will be impacted without that shelter until then? And I know that weighs on you, but it weighs, it really weighs on me when time is taken. So, um, I don't have any questions. I really don't. I have questions for our finance director and our DCD director. Um, but, but they'll be back and we'll get those questions answered then. So thank you, my friends and colleagues, for doing what you do best. And I, I'm sorry I had to share a little bit of frustration there. Don't, don't normally do that with these folks.
All right. So I didn't, I don't know who else has their hand up.
Jeff and you. Now you go.
Okay, uh, let's see. Uh, no, I think, uh, I've obviously been part of the weekly conversations that's been going on. Um, so I'm up to speed on a lot of it, but I kind of, I want to attest, um, to the timeline that the group as a whole, I think, is equally frustrated, right? Um, and I can say it was not our community partners that, that reason things took long, uh, for this particular parcel. Um, really grateful to the organization it came from, but it was a large organization that did not move quickly. So that, but we're here now, which is great. Um, the operations budget, I know when it presented in January twenty twenty-four, the estimate back then was two to three million. So it's right in line. Um, so I think it's good to keep in mind that that operations budget has always been before us. It's always been something we need to think about and plan for. Um, and the amount really hasn't, hasn't changed from a year and a half ago and what we need to, what we need to work towards. Uh, the one kind of clarifying question too, is in terms of timeline, something I like about this model, um, is the scalability and, uh, I just want to make it clear that I, you all have in your head of a minimal viable product of, um, working on the, you know, the low barrier can go first. It's independent from the pallet and vice versa and right? You know, I wanted to speak to just some of that on the flexibility.
Yeah, super quickly, just on that, um, this, this project itself. I have so many things I want to talk with you about Denise. Uh, but beyond that, um, it is scalable and it is sequential from the standpoint of getting as, getting the, the quantum huts in as quickly as possible, getting that emergency shelter in as quickly as possible. That is our paramount item. Um, it's a, that one does have more permits though. I, I just need to qualify that. Those require, every building requires a building permit. We have to have a site development permit. And so the temporary encampment, while that could actually probably get in quicker, our focus is making sure that the shelter is gone. We are going to run all of these as close as possible, but also staggered in a way that one doesn't, like weigh down the review process of another. So that is, has been my, my hope and, and plan for how we approach this. Well, from a land use and planning standpoint, as well as a building permitting standpoint, looking at how we make sure that this is streamlined as possible so we can at least get one up. And even if it's just one to begin with and we have the second one coming, we finish one out. We are also going to be looking at trying to use, you know, scale. We get the economy of scale. So if we've got an insulator doing one, best to do it both at the same time, but understanding if we have to do something to make sure that we get one done first, we are going to be looking at that. Um, this also has the ability to be scaled up if you find as, if a recession is coming, as things, as homelessness maybe grows, we also have the ability to move forward with expanding that if it's necessary because we do have a larger piece of land. None of us want that to be the case. We want to find a solution so we have less homelessness. But we have to be very, very clear with the reality of what is happening right now and the increased number of people that are unhoused. And so this has the ability to just address the minimum that we have set forth as well as grow as needed in a very, very smart way. Sorry.
No, thank you for, for clarifying that. That's good. And a two last things is to, um, give some kudos on the communications ahead of time. I mean, I do want to, that wasn't on the slides, but I've gone to a number of other district meetings to talk about the model. Um, I know in those you've gotten feedback on, uh, concerns from people and said, you know, although the specific parcel wasn't mentioned, it was, hey, if this was near you, what would your concerns be, right? What would help mitigate those concerns? And so I know you've already done a good amount of initial feedback. Uh, and I'll just close with the, we've all got work to do. Let's echo it, right? This is, this is desperately needed in our community. Um, we need to work with our state partners. We need to figure out the funding challenges. Those have always been there. But I know that everyone in this room working together can get it done. No doubt in my mind. Um, so just thank you and let's all go forward as a team.
Good, Jane.
Okay, so first, thank you. I know this is incredible amount of work past couple of years, you've, you know, all gotten together weekly to work on this. I'm really, really concerned about the community outreach. And I reread the article that was in the Kitsap Sun when there was a large meeting up by, um, oh, can I remember the name of your?
Swing Set Mall?
No. Your housing developer, they just. And all those same things, yet more are going to be asked by the community. And you've got a pretty short timeline in here to do that. And I know, um, Joe came to a community meeting that I had, but that was back in February and frankly, the, the graphics were much different and not, you know, they weren't as all encompassing as you have now. Um, I'm really worried about the amount of time you have to contribute to the outreach. And if that isn't done properly and we have to, we have to talk to the people who don't want it, not the people who do want it.
Yeah.
It needs to be who has been talked to the most. So, I mean, we really have to, that has to be the major goal. And then I've been watching, um, the really disappointing, uh, talks on different executive actions from the federal government. And if, if I understand it right, it doesn't appear to be, um, funding for housing first anymore. And that would mean low barrier shelters. So is that going to be a big hurdle that we can't get over? Or is it all going to be state and local funding? Or is it all going to be state and local funding until we run out? Okay.
Uh, of course, you're building this out. You never put all your eggs in one basket, right? So understanding different models, understanding different service delivery models. Uh, housing first, you know, might be the pendulum swing of one administration. But understanding what the concepts of people first model would like. And we've actually baked in some of that into the roots uh, of this operations model in this, in that manifold service delivery that I've expressed in those community outreaches, that's actually more of a people first approach, which is what this, more about this administration's kind of need towards. And so we are actually looking at pathways, which is an F D S uh, tool that you saw for funding sources. And with utilizing pathways, it's actually more of a holistic approach. So when we do screen, the person comes into the congregate shelter, we address what their needs are. Some are employment needs, some are substance use needs, some are domestic violence exposure and some are mental health, um, issues. And so we look at a holistic approach. And we, we deliver the services that person needs. So we've already, we've already kind of baked that into the backend and to give us flexibility and to not let us be beholden to any one administration dependent on what's right.
Okay, and just one thing to add, let's just talk about funding. Um, sorry.
Oh, hello, who are you, sir?
Sorry.
Hello, Mr. Ives.
Um, so, so the secret here is leveraging funding, funding, so it's not all on the city or the county. So remember what happened with Mills Crossing, the county and the city stepped in really quick. Then Commerce jumped in with six point three million and made that funding, that funding for fear. We're already on this, but as the slide was presented, you saw that Department of Health, uh, number. What that really means is Department of Health said, oh, let's do an experimental project around the shelter and around unhoused folks. Three counties were selected and we were one of them because they know our collaboration. So they're like, ask for what you want. How many people do you want? And that's not a Commerce thing, although the recommendation came from Commerce, the Department of uh, Health has that money. So at the same time, as, as, uh, our team mentioned, a housing trust fund, hopefully that money is going to come because they all recognize what we're doing here. It's a county model and that's a secret. We're not asking for everything, uh, from the city or for the county. What we're trying to do is leverage the relationship to leverage the money.
Okay. So that's good to know. So another thing Salvation Army needs to, um, for lack of a better term, kick out people who a lot of them have severe mental health problems. Is the shelter going to be able to help them and to keep them safe and to keep the other people there safe? Is that?
That is one of the reasons why we're going to have, since we have health services, is going to have an onsite presence. Because we're just, um, we have, we run the mobile crisis outreach team. We have the crisis triage facility, run the adult inpatient in it. At the end of the day, unless it rises to certain standards of danger to self or others, we can't force somebody involuntarily into treatment.
Right.
But the, but the root of this type of model is that there will be community behavior standards. There has to be.
Right.
Because if you can't hold folks accountable to stay in community, then it becomes a break for all. So there has to be standards and that, that is, we know that that's needed. So we will always try to engage folks into getting them into substance use and having that ongoing presence of staff where they build relationships with them, they get stability, they're not going, coming and going every single day. That's when you can build the relationships to actually engage people and get people to a place where they want to get into services. But at the end of the day, if they don't and out of that mental illness or substance use, um, they're unable to stay in community, then they're not a good fit for the low barrier shelter, nor would they have. And, and that's the same standard that, you know, I'm sure Salvation Army uses. There is no, if you don't do that, then, then, then it becomes exactly what people say about housing first, which is not what we're intending to do. We're in, we moving forward with an accountability model and we know that it works. So I don't know if that answers your question.
Maybe free up space at Pendleton Place for somebody that really needed.
Ultimately Pendleton Place is permanent housing and so, so folks at Pendleton Place, most of our folks have been there, um, since the beginning. Other folks have moved on to other, other types of housing. This is different in that it's a shelter, but it's going to have access to pathways to permanent house. Ultimately, we want to get people into transitional housing. Permanent house, we don't want people to be in a situation where they're living, you know, in shelter forever. And that's why having onsite services is going to be so important.
Okay, then my last, uh, major question. Is, is your budget based on the city, city deviating from our standards? For the site development, because that seems really low.
Yes. So that was, that was, the, the site development was based on tying into utilities, including, you know, sewer, power, water, all of that, grading basic development of the site. Deviation from, or requests for support for things like frontage improvements, we're not just in that original budget.
Yeah, because that's two million.
And that's, and that is why, again, part of the right of way dedication is providing land to the city. So getting some, you know, this is where the back and forth conversation will happen with Public Works. Will they put part of the bill associated with street frontage improvements as a quid pro quo for a right of way deviation? Because it's a lot of land that they're requesting. It's quite a bit of land that they would like.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, that's, it's pretty common. Especially, you know, on our cereals, that's not an uncommon thing for right of nature, right of way dedication.
Un- understood, but it's right now, it's not done. It hasn't been done. It's a requested element. And so again, it is, it is a portion of land that would not be used. And so this is a conversation that happens quite a bit when, when cities request right of ways to be put through parcels that are private.
Okay.
I, I, there, there's no slam dunk on this one by any means, um, but there's, you know, there's, there are things that we can do and there is monies for certain parts of that, that frontage improvements, landscaping, things like that, that is included in there. Changing curb cuts, widening sidewalks, that's a different story. And there's sidewalks that are there. The other part of this also has to do with how soon are they going to do other connecting frontage improvements? It's up to the director. So there, there are pathways forward. And to Denise's point, we are not looking to, to not do work that might, somebody else might do. We are trying to create a path forward that is good for the community, but doesn't stop the development of this project. And that is where we are going to have to work with the city as part of, with the D C D, with Public Works, as our partners to get this to go through, because maybe the level it might go to with a for-profit development might be different, because all of a sudden you've got a different kind of community and you've got like little nodes here. And to Denise's point, she wanted to see a different kind of development. I get it. There, there's a lot of opportunity for that site. And there are going to be parts of the site that we are hoping to broaden off that will be done for future development that may lend themselves to greater frontage that can be part of this discussion. I think the thing is, is this is going to have multi-phases over the course of the next 10 years as it relates into this parcel. And so how do we make sure we get this element taken care of? Understanding that the, the community is going to want further development as well and much like C F funding, is there a means of doing it over the course of a few years versus holding this up so that we don't have something now that the city needs from the standpoint of shelter? So we will be working with all of the city, D C D, Public Works, City Council to determine, with the D R B to determine what is going to be A, good for this community, but B, that doesn't tank the project and, and make it so that we can't build this. So there's, there's no, there is no intent not to do some of this. We just are going to have to work with everybody. And so to your point, the, the development did not have full frontage, um, improvements for this site as part of that, because you're right, it's another $2 million.
Easily. All right. Well, I really appreciate what you're doing and all the work. I, I do have concerns about where the money's coming from, but we have budget negotiations next next month, so. But that's how much, how much are you asking for the city? There, I mean, a ballpark.
I think the question, you know, obviously the more money that you can get and the more security we have to look for, like, and then our board has to look for. Um, you know, so you, but I think the real question is whether it's your priority and if this is your priority. You know, I mean, the only reason that the Housing Authority is this because this is their priority. You know, so I guess, you know, I, if you want a member I need to think about that. I can get it to you, but, um, you know, right now, what we know is we have the bed rate. That's what we have to do.
Yeah.
And that's, you know, you're going to a million, so.
I'm not trying to pitch on this.
Yeah, no, I know. It's okay. I, you know, I
I think it would be helpful to have that though, especially also if we considerate and, uh, that if the numbers for site development are excluded from that and there's like expectations that this need to the site in person of ourselves, that we get those numbers, hopefully with them.
I mean, I think about a million dollars would be a really, uh, strong commitment that would help us deliver that, that dollar.
I mean, I agree with you on that for operations per year. I, I was, to that, that piece. And then also the piece on what part of the site development are you expecting the city to?
It's, it's more the, it's more the frontage improvements and what that, what the directors, so this is a chicken and the egg type situation here, because the director is the one who gets to determine what's frontage improvements are required. What, yes and no, but there, there are portions of the code that state that the director has the ability to determine what level of frontage improvements are going to be required for this site. That is, that is what the code states, as well as their ability to, to deviate from frontage improvements dependent upon further frontage improvements that are on adjacent sites associated with it. So there is, there is some language in the code that we will be meeting with D C D to discuss further as that relates to it, because again, if we get a right of way dedication through the middle of that property, that creates a lot split. So all of a sudden our frontage requirements are less. So there is, there is a lot of chicken in the egg here. This is not a linear path. There's there's thirteen different ways that I can, I can move these shelves to find the right way forward. And I don't know that yet because there's going to be a lot of, of input that we've got from both Public Works as well as D Z D and the director as it relates to what we're going to do. But I, and, but I hear you and we will be able to put real numbers to that once we have a little bit more solid direction as it relates to how big this parcel actually will end up being with a right of way dedication and what kind of development is going to be needed for those frontage improvements.
Okay, Michael, did you have any?
Um, I think, um, I've had some that have gotten answered, but, but thank you for, um, getting through this with us in this heat. And, uh, yeah, I think we'll, we've got some work to do as, as we all do, we'll do it together.
I have a few questions. So first of all, as planned, currently planned, how many individuals would this site host?
Eighty beds in the shelter currently and then thirty to forty pallets.
Four hundred and ten.
Hundred and twenty.
The three million dollar operational costs. Let's say you can only raise a million dollars first year. This, before you contribute or before you put shovels in the ground, are you going to have the first year or two's operations committed or are we going to? What are you going to?
It, that would be preferable to have the first year or two committed. Yes, that's, that's what we would like. If we don't have that, I think our board will guide us as to what kind of risks they want our agents to take in the form of building them. What we are, the Governmental Housing Authority, we are going to purchase this land regardless. We have the state money to do that and my board is committed to doing that and taking on that risk. I, I'm not going to speak for my board as far as what they will guide me to do. There is not operational money change with both the parks in the ground. Um, I know that they're highly supportive of this and all of us individually are, are going to put everything we can into getting this done and built with or without that, but I can't speak for what our board will allow us to do.
No worries, but there has to be a plan B.
Yes.
Pivot to something. In the Housing Authority's domain.
Absolutely. And it's scalable, like, you know, we had thought about this, but what if we only have this amount? What should we do? Should we just do, should we just do something, you know? Or do we do nothing? And I think that continues the conversation between all of us as well. What, this is what we have. What do we want to do?
And then your project requires a zoning code change regardless, because of where it's located. The, the pallets are only, well, you can do it one time, you know, it's temporary for one hundred and eighty-three days. And the thing over that requires a zoning change.
That, that's correct. And, and we did that previously.
Sure.
And this, this law just so happened to, to be on the literal outskirts of it, which is part of the reason even a suggestion of, of an amendment to the, the comp plan, because it is on the edge. It's not like stuck in the middle. It
Sure. So my concern is this would have to, the planning commission would have to get, well, whatever the planning commission recommends. And then it goes to next year's city council for them to decide yes or no based on public input, all that, finding commissions, guidance, or whatever. But before that occurs, do you anticipate putting shovels in the ground?
No. Zoning code language change is starting immediately. Unless, unless city council's like, we think we can do this. That zoning code language change, we're already in the process of, of working on the C P A for it and the narrative. So but we'd still do the congregate shelter first. This, this parcel allows for the shelter, the emergency shelter. It doesn't allow for the long-term temporary encampment permit.
Okay.
So that, there is still something that can be done here. That said, we are already moving forward with a lot of the elements that we can move forward with, understanding the timeframe for it. And that's why, again, we are pushing at a very aggressive schedule in order to try and minimize how much longer we are waiting, just given how long that we were waiting for finding the right parcel, finding a parcel, B, Frank, I, I'd need to throw that out there. Finding a parcel was very, very difficult. We visited a billion different spots. But, so we are doing as much as we can to, to fast track those elements that are going to take a hundred and eighty days.
Right. And then just to be, uh, frank or clear, uh, so there's no misunderstanding. The city's twenty twenty-six budget has no money allocated for operation costs for shelter. The city's commitment was the arbo money that we assigned in I L A. I think you know all this. So, um, as we leave this meeting tonight, there are no promises going forward that we're going to give a nickel. We're not saying we're not, but as, as of tonight, is we have to go through the budget process and then go through the vote of the council before we committed any fund. Just wanted to check. It's clear. Now, council, we've already gone past, I'm willing to, I, I'm hoping we don't do a round of seven questions. I won't have any more. But if you have any earning ones that need to ask, or else we'll really show Jennifer and then Jeff, and then hopefully we're done by seven.
Okay, here's what I'm going to do for everybody here. I'm going to put three minutes on my timer and it's going to go up and I'm going to shut up when it goes up. Okay?
Or they will.
So
Or we will.
I can do that all the time.
Yeah. Yeah. Well, you're president, right? So, okay, I want to start. Now here's what I, before I start this, you've been very concise and clear about your answers. Um, I need quick answers so we can get through this and we're going to be done with it. All right. So, um, the first thing is a statement that I just want to say, I kind of want to piggyback on something that you said, which is, you know, like that there's views, but like unhoused folks deserve views too. They also deserve bike lanes. They deserve wheelchair access on their sidewalks. Um, they deserve all those things that a regular development has. So I am absolutely in support of what you're saying, not just for your constituents, for the unhoused folks that are there. So this is a statement on that. I want to make sure that you're going to have I want to make sure that you're gonna have um medical respite, medical triage for folks that are like, what about folks that are incontinent? Folks that are being released from the hospital, just a yes or no, are you gonna have that service available at the home of the huts?
I can, yeah, yes, thank you.
Okay, um, are we talking about, when you, when you want to talk about the fair value of the land and the right of way acquisition? I mean, the right of way acquisition, I'm curious about the fair value of the land, is that, because when there's a right of way acquisition, the city pays for that, for that land, right? So is that not going to be enough to pay for the tie-in to the services, yes or no?
Yes.
Okay, it's going to be enough.
I, I, sorry. I, I, I do not know, because I need to talk to the director about what exactly needs to be done, so that is gonna be the question.
Okay.
But that is, that is the intent.
So people in their cars, will they be able to drive in with their cars and?
Yes.
Okay. And do you have, um, do you have, are you gonna connect with services that can assist with people fixing their cars, a simple fix?
Don't know.
I, I agree with that.
Okay, and so um, I want to know that, is there a water reservoir in this property?
Not this property.
Okay, all right. Adjacent, okay, do, and we need to make sure that that wa- water reservoir is also protected, right? So, but it is adjacent, so we, you're gonna need to be looking at that holistic, you know, um, view of, there's gonna be people camping all around. Um, I am confused about the difference between this property and the Oyster Bay property. So in a minute or less, tell me the difference between the Oyster Bay property and this property.
Flat land.
Okay.
Major issue right there, there is not gonna be massive amounts of exclamation, it's already flat. There are quick tie-ins to almost all of the utilities, there's one question. Um, there's a lot more space, there is the ability to provide um quite a bit of room, you're not jammed in there. Um, the other thing is, is there's a lot more buffer from all of the other adjacent uh parcels as a result of the size of this, and we are taking that space to make sure that those buffers exist.
Bree, what was your biggest complaint when you came to city council prior to being contracted by this group as to what the problem was with the previous property, your biggest complaint was?
There was no operations plan for it, as well as I did not believe that the numbers actually worked from the standpoint of what that land development was gonna be.
It didn't have to do with like parks or anything like that, it was, that was your.
It was pro, it was proximity to, to.
Right. Okay, that's it, uh, four seconds to spare, thank you for your time. Felt like a lightning round, I'm gonna be honest.
That's what we do sometimes.
Well, you know what, Jeff and then Anna and then at seven o'clock, we're.
I have one question.
Just, we talked about operations funding, what's the total annual operating cost of Salvation Army Shelter right now?
It's two hundred and twenty thousand dollars a month.
Per month, yeah, so per year is, is around two point five million?
Yeah, yeah.
So not too different than what we're looking at here.
How much are you paying that for operations with the shelter?
Uh, the funding we use for Salvation Army was our funding. And so now they're working on the per bed rate, so they'll be going, right now they do three meals a day, same for everything right away. When, when the funding runs down to whether it's per bed rate, that'll be more of the overnight, they won't do the three meals a day, so it'll be more of an overnight shelter, I suppose.
What does that eat up to, and you only want to make that contribution?
Um, right now we've got them at five hundred and fifteen, eight thousand, what we're on. Based on their bed, based on the number of beds and per bed rates that we have.
Is the county causing that, and is the shelter being like in addition to or is it instead of?
No, it's instead of, yeah. Salvation Army was never designed to be a shelter, they're only doing it out of the, the time that they're hard to take.
Jeff, Bree, that was my only question. Okay, for Anna, you have the honor of the last question, it's gonna be a good one.
I hope so.
All right.
Um, I thought Denise raised a really good point, and I was wondering, Mayor, why, since zoning is so critical to this, why someone from D C D is not at this meeting?
The, the, this middle conference and the, the vibe from the city sharing there. And so I, I heard some comments about director discretion. Directors cannot do play of winners. Everything will have a precedence, uh, the decision made will have a precedent to be based upon, including the current law, current standards. So it's not a law that can be waived. Um, and frankly, the, what questions would you like me to be like?
I have been given a time limit, so um, I, I won't go into that right now, but I, it would have been just, I was wondering why they weren't here, because I think all of us would have had questions.
Okay.
No, no worries, thank you, Mayor, for your response.
Thank you.
Hey, uh, thank you for your presentation, thank you for meeting with us.
Nothing, nothing.
I got six fifty-six, we'll come back at seven, ten. Back in session, back on our agenda, items, item C one is renewal lease agreement in the United States of America regarding historic building fifty, sound, maybe? Here tonight, present is our contracts administrator, Ms. Linda Ro, go ahead, please.
Good evening, council. We've been presented with a ten-year lease renewal for building fifty, which helps us to move in. And next a little history recap for us, um, a review then of the current building and the impact of lost tax fees and then the um current plans that are underway. Um, in nineteen sixty, the Brooklyn City, these a six thousand. Um, nineteen sixty six, Bremerton used a six thousand, but it was a new and very general, not the building. And housed the Navy Memorial Museum. In nineteen ninety eight, between nineteen ninety eight and two thousand and two, there was a change to that arrangement for the city. And then they no longer rent that building and provide the utilities until that building was owned by the Navy and taken up under a nonprofit. As the city began construction, had the, there was currently the answer, fell in the conference center. Negotiations began for land swap. And the movement of building fifty from the shipyard to its current location. And just also what has been various and what is now the harbor site. So in two thousand and six, this was completed. The park was completed, replacement of the USS first section sale and vermont council park repeated. And the city now owns that building and the lease for land and a lease.
Say the land again.
Um, good.
Who wants to land?
Uh, the city owns.
Okay.
We've been presented with a new tenure lease proposal. That continues the relationship between the city Bremerton and Department of the Navy's honors, the purchase law itself has completed in that. Development, understanding legal authority of and U S. One and allows for the good and mutual benefit of city Bremerton and Department of the Navy. As we've been situated to end the specific avenue, it is the shipyard, adjacent to the Washington state fairies and the Bremerton Harbor. Serves as a welcome to tour, to the city Bremerton and the buildings often used by the content conference center. And the service there at work and through at that park and by just general ventures of public site. The welcome that tourists receive and change three missions. In and in twenty twenty four, after receiving tourist funds for the first time I ever heard of. Um, they reported sixty five thousand visitors to that museum annually. And sixty two thousand bed logage rooms for Bremerton. As our average logage night is under sixty seven dollars. That that should have contributed up to four hundred thirty five thousand of our lodging tax funds for that year. So significant amount and.
I need to interrupt.
Okay.
This is just not realistic. I'm sorry, those of us who have been on LTAC, and this is not you, this is from them, isn't it? Yes, this is from them, and this is what applicants always do for LTAC. They overestimate, I don't doubt that sixty five thousand visitors. I doubt very much that they all spent the night, very much. And we, we just generated four hundred and thirty five thousand dollars in lodging tax funds. We only get, we get like a million, so.
They're not generating.
They didn't generate that, so just that whole paragraph, I don't think we should consider.
Uh, thank you. Yeah. Um, and like I said, that's a potential number. Um, we did receive eight or thirty three thousand. And we reported.
Same potential.
Uh, sixty five thousand visitors and then they reported. Um, they did not report sixty five thousand spending the night. Um, they had a different number for that, that it was actually more like thirty four thousand potentially spent the night. Um, I remember I'm coming off the top of my head, I can.
Potential is not.
I'd be having to share those numbers.
That I don't dispute, again, I don't dispute, they're just wrong, so. That's all, they, they're.
For sure.
Yes.
I would, I'd love just to share the numbers so you can.
Well, they came from the museum.
Uh, a number that you feel comfortable with as far as their contribution to.
They were here for the Turner.
You got a lot of science.
No, this is not the direction LTAC is going.
Right.
Let's just say that, yeah.
Thank you.
Yes, that wasn't at all towards you, Melinda, that was disputing the Navy museum's perception that they're generating that many bed nights, that's all.
Um, so in this proposal, um, they, they answered a variety of questions once. One of those, one of the questions that came before me was how many other Navy museums across the U S um, are on city property and do not give rent for utilities? So there are ten official Navy museums located around, around the country. Um, there's only one other museum that is operating on city owned property, Anthony's Road Naval Museum in La Fosh, Virginia. And it also does not pay for rent for utilities. Um, the other Navy museums are. Um, as this museum is an official duty to the Navy N V, it is supported by annual pre-pressing operations administered by U S Navy History and Heritage Command in Washington D C. Um, and you know, if you'll see in the next statements here, the operation of the building requires some cooperation between the city Bremerton and the D O D. Due to that land and real estate transaction. So annually, the city supports the general maintenance, the building fifty, the general H VAC. We supply water and electric service, system systems, including exterior maintenance and ground maintenance. With an annual budget of around thirty five thousand dollars a year. That's an average annual over the last few years. The Puget Sound Naval Museum in the last seven years have, they also contribute. Um, track exhibits and volunteers by general material service and the maintenance climate control system was recently installed. Maintenance and installation of the mass communication system. Additionally, Navy, Navy's gene burst, they have related repairs and fitness systems, carpet replacement, the new climate control system. And they will be adding, including for the new C C P camera system to sister the building security value that. So there has been just a longstanding history between the city and the Navy. Um, first, both the placement of this building, the operation of this building and really the welcome that it provides to tourists in the area. It's a historical building and both the city and the Navy benefit from this placement. Our parks department utilizes the basement access of that building to, to allow service when folks are renting out power for conference park and as well as thinking of the conference as well. Um, so there really is a partnership between the two entities because that reason staff will. That I am looking for questions for it.
Okay, let's see, this is Justin finance.
Public works.
Public work, oh, interesting.
I suppose. Well, it was born by public works. All right, for all that.
Yeah, our maintenance is performed by Mr. Don McHaut's group. Looking for an email. Don McHaut provided to.
Actually, it should be in the packet for your copy right now.
Yeah. Oh, that was in the package.
P S N M for your bus breakdown?
Yep. First, some of the information they provided to you that Denise already brought up. There's no way that there have that many overnight guests. We don't have that many overnight, we don't have that many hotel rooms. But they could possibly have.
Why don't, I bring, since that's been a question, I actually can bring up that number here and tell you exactly.
I bet it didn't come from data block. Now.
From what?
Data block, the tourism data.
Two or six, oh, six. Anybody know how many hotel rooms we have? Yeah, be more than four hundred downtown.
I don't know. I think we're all.
Yeah, we're in agreement, we don't. Well, I mean, let's, I'm gonna say it again, let's not forget about the short term rentals.
Yeah.
All right.
So I think we're all discounting the hotel lodging tax.
Okay.
We're good.
So, I mean, we are. We have some severe budget issues. And, I mean, there's no air conditioning in this building because, or this part of the building. Because our facility staff is working hard to get it, but it costs money. And they're spending money there that I think the Navy museum could pay the, you know, that maintenance fee. They paid for part of it, they can pay for all of it. I mean, they, it's free to get in, they could start charging people two dollars. I mean, if they've got that many people coming to visit, they charged them two dollars apiece. That would easily pay for what our facilities group is putting out. I, you know, last year, weren't they given a one year extension? And at that point, I remember us talking about, well, we really need to look at this closely for next year before another ten year comes up. And now we have a week and to make a decision. I, I disagree, I, I'm not in favor of continuing the lease as it is. I think that they can easily absorb those costs.
So again, before we get to next questions for the record.
I'm sorry.
What is, what is the, uh, no, they answered this, but what is the, the amount of consideration the Navy is gonna give us if we renew this? How many dollars?
Um, so it's a zero dollar loss.
Okay.
Which is, which is, uh, you know, basically legally flexible under that section ten. And, and for us as well, because we're both local entities, local government. Um, local government entity, that is a legal option. That's how we operate it in fact, by one dollar.
But going back and you had it in slides, I'm not sure it was fully covered. When we got the building, it was moved here, that was the understanding is the initial term, there was, there wasn't gonna be any cost, correct?
Right.
So that was the, the council before you said, yeah, we'll love to have the building moved here. And it's gonna be city owned property and there will be no lease payment. So now, and I understand it's a new renewal term, so I get that, Jane, and I respect that, and that's the council's purview. But now you wanna change the terms. Not you, I mean, US particularly.
I particularly do.
The city's longstanding intent, that's fine. So, okay, is that all your comments yet?
That's my comment.
Okay.
I have a quick question, and Mel, you might not have this information, but you were talking about the one in Norfolk. And, um, I think it said, the file said that City Cover did not charge for rent utilities. But there wasn't anything about maintenance. Uh, but maybe it's a building that doesn't need as much maintenance, I don't know.
Here's the picture of the Norfolk Hamptons, look at that beautiful building.
Yeah, yeah.
It's not historic, I mean, it's a modern building.
Yeah. Um, they have a lot. I don't know if, you know, while they don't pay any money for rent or, or utilities. Are they paying for maintenance? Does the city pay?
Well, I think that we are, I do think that, I try to keep my opinion out of this thing, but, you know, uh, one of the other items that I brought into the. The use, the city debt from the building. The connection to the content conference center. Um, as well as to our parks department. Um, so it really is a pivotal piece of just the infrastructure and first dollars and plan in the area. And, you know, I think that it was, it was factor is to that development, the land block and the and maintenance at that time was proof.
It's many, many, many years ago.
It is, and I think that we have certainly received some tax dollars based.
Oh, sure.
On the relationship and the placement.
Probably the Turner Joy, but because they're here for the Turner Joy, they go to the Navy museum.
That's exactly it.
It's free.
You know.
Yeah.
Um, it's, it's a combination.
Wonderful, it's.
It has been there for two thousand and four, for quite a while. Um, and I will say that, that, that maintenance cost, I don't know, it's fifty thousand, some years it is much lower. Um, so, you know.
On this, um, I guess the, the numbers, it's got, um, last year at two hundred and twenty one thousand dollars? I can't, I'm not seeing where that.
The roof.
Yeah.
Wasn't there some leaking with this, am I remembering there was some damage from water?
It's under the maintenance.
I think have received some historical things. Twenty eighteen, actually, the money for maintenance of the building from the Navy. So they have historically funded several repairs, um, recently to perfect.
Right, okay.
But. Outside of that timeframe, and so, um, you know, the historical cost is around a thousand, but I mean, always the amount rate.
Two hundred and twenty one thousand.
Are the comments, I have a count. Is there a compromise here? Um, I'm looking at these expenses here. And so there is an advantage for us having to pay for the repairs. I probably will admit this, be careful when you allow another entity take care of your building. It may go down real quick and it ends up being more expensive in the long term to get it back up to speed. And the city has experienced this before with others, so I don't need to name them, but I've been around long enough to know, it has happened. But when I look at these expense, utility bills, why can't we negotiate where the Navy pays for their utility? Because they're the primary use, yes, there's incidental uses where we may use, you know, that big room or whatever, but I would probably say ninety percent of the time, if not more, it's the utilities on because of them. But the other stuff, the contracts that basically the HVAC, the elevator, we wanna pay for that because we wanna be in charge and make sure things inspected and all that stuff. So can you go back to them and say, hey, look, we'll renew this, but we'd like you to pay your.
Mm-hmm, yep, that's fair.
That's religious. I certainly go back to that.
And it's a decent chunk of money, that's twenty thousand a year, so, you know, we're looking at.
Consistently.
So, which there's ways to save money on utilities. Well, now they'll have an incentive to maybe, I don't know, I'm not accusing them of having.
No, it's.
Seven ADA ramps built by our crews, twenty thousand a year.
So I, I think.
So it's fully acceptable.
I, I think we, is that the direction, counsel? Oh, yeah.
I, I agree with that.
You know what, I, 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 on a, on a Henry end up. I do too. And I, I flurried.
Okay. You are the better finance person than I, Eric. Um, I just wanted to mention that the, replacing the carpet based on that twenty twenty two um, maintenance item, that probably cost around five to ten grand. And that, that was paid for by the Navy in twenty twenty four, and I'm, I'm high balling it there. The reason that the replacement of the roof was so very expensive, over a hundred and seventy thousand dollars, was that we had to maintain historical consistency, right? So there had to be, to make, have wooden gutters made. The, I have a house built in nineteen twenty two, this one looks older. Um, but as a house gets older, it doesn't improve in condition. All kinds of things go wrong. I think Jane's suggestion, I think we should add to the, take the utilities to, like, you have sixty six thousand dollars, sixty six thousand visitors a year, charge them two bucks. There's virtually no one who has come here to be a tourist who doesn't have two bucks in their wallet. Um, and, you know, take over some of the costs.
We really shouldn't be telling them, I don't agree as far as charge.
Right.
Can we suggest it?
No, they can figure out how to get the Russian idea from entry.
Let them figure out and make up the utility cost.
Yeah.
But, okay, so Michael, um, did we buy the building or was it given to us?
A dollar.
Okay, did we buy the land or was that given to us?
That, that was.
I mean, so there's some, some sort of quote, quote here, but, but the main thing I wanna, I, I don't have a problem with what Jane's looking at. Um, I think, I, I would like us to not set a precedent here that we. Um, I think, I, I would like us to not set a precedent here that we, that, you know, like, so what, what's the agreement that we have with the conference center? What's the agreement we have with the Admiral Theater or the uh, Library or I can't think of any other buildings, you know, off the top of my head. The Community Theater. So what is, what, you know, if we want to move to a standard where tenants are going to pay utilities or pay for, but you know, I, I just, I want us to be across the board. And, and that being said, we might even look at saying, you know what? All, all any leases are going to wrap up in twenty twenty-nine, so we can have a little reset across the board or something like that.
Oh.
Anyway, I just want to be, I want us to be fair. And I don't want us to think that, you know, this group, because it's, you know, federal government, but it, you know, it's got deeper pockets than the Admiral, the Library or whatever. I just want us to make sure.
Consistent, yeah.
That we, that we, and it's, it doesn't, and it, because I don't want it to feel like we're going after one tenant.
Because we don't like.
So Linda, do you know off the top, I have designed the library, we paid for all the improvements, we did an HVAC thing here. So I believe we charged zero for the library. Do they pay for each other? The library paid for the utilities? That's the question. And now we go to the Community Theater, that's also a bargain on, city owns that. And then, then I, I don't know the answer to that.
I don't really.
I believe they do pay for their operation.
Perfect, well.
That's a smart idea.
Didn't they come to us with the request for funding?
Right, and then they, the fundraiser, I remember they, they went and they upgraded all their, like, their seats and all that. So they did all that.
Didn't come from us.
They come, they, they did it all, so. But to, to Michael's point, I, I really do believe in Mr. Donald, I do can fight Ben, I saw you nine, you're good. I'm not trying to win the argument, but the city, if it's, we own it, I think we want to have control of, of fixing things that need fixing rather than waiting for the tenant.
We do, that's why we do all the maintenance, so we fix things, because like we said, if we let the tenants fix it and we're down there fixing even more.
You're good. So uh, Michael, to get to your point, if we can just kind of like set this contract, say, you just pay the utilities now. And then we treat the others as their contract come up, you're going to be around for a while. But uh, that's a, I'm not, so I won't remember, I won't be able to tell you. So uh, maybe, maybe that's the approach, if the council will think that's their.
I'd sure like to see consistency.
Yeah.
Yeah. I'd like to see what everybody's paying as soon as possible, like, I'm, I'm pretty sure me and this theater is paying a lot more percentage-wise than others. And I'm not saying that we need to get all other city-owned buildings. Does the Admiral pay for their utilities?
The Admiral.
Right. Let me tell.
What I like about that then is that's, that's, that's a case that we can go to, to the Navy and say like, hey, we'd like to bring this, you know, like.
Yeah.
We love having you.
Yeah.
And we, you know, but we'd like to bring this in more in line, you know, signing things like the roof and things like that, like.
I will say that the Admiral may not be equivalent because they.
Generates a lot of money.
And they receive a lot of lodging costs.
Okay.
Yeah.
Oh, sure.
Yeah, they do.
The Navy needs.
And the Navy Museum has never received any lodges.
Started pouring one out, it was a shame though.
I didn't.
They, in the last few years, they've received. But that's the first that I have in your record.
So in the Admiral's defense, lodging tax used to be two percent. And the Admiral Theater negotiated with both the city and the county to raise that to four percent. And they signed him simultaneously. And for them doing that, that's why they got this long-term, larger chunk of LTAC than most places do, so.
Still good to reexamine.
It is good to reexamine, I mean, it's not forever with them anyway, so.
So I don't think this is going on a consent agenda, but you need to negotiate, I think you have the direction of the council or does the council? I wanted to weigh in, so um. We almost absolutely appreciate the Navy Museum being here, right? Regardless, regardless of the exact numbers, that, that all the benefits listed, they're bringing a lot of people. Uh, but yeah, this conversation of, of equity, I think not only extends to uh, city-owned buildings, but what buildings we own, right? We've talked about, going back twenty, thirty years, we know why certain buildings were invested by the city for revitalization. And been more at the point where we have multiple theaters, multiple museums, multiple, right? So it's not only, I think, being equitable, um, building the building, but, but thinking about that, right? Conference Center is unique, we don't have a private conference center. Um, and I suppose, so that standpoint. And I know last year when I was at um, their board meeting in the middle of twenty twenty-four, I did raise this issue with them. I just said, hey, the council is starting to, you know, starting to look at this. Um, and so there was a heads up, you know, over a year ago, um, that we did want to just talk about this. So it shouldn't be a, not a surprise to them that we wanted to have this conversation and dig into details. And in that meeting too, I know they, they did have a really nice breakdown of how they raised their money between the foundation and the museum. Um, which I think if we can get a copy of, would be, would be really great to have in here. Um, it's kind of an annual report, they probably have a new one for this year.
Foundation.
Yeah. Uh, because it, it did show, I got a lot of, they do raise a lot of money on their own. Um, but yeah, that said, I, I think, I think utilities is a good, a good compromise. Because I can tell you from the museum, you know, history museum, yeah, we've worked hard, working with PSE to try and get utility bill down. And for museums, you need a, you need a certain level of uh, minimal temperature fluctuations, right? You can't, you can't turn off the heat at five PM and say, oh, let the building get to fifty and, you know, warm it up in the morning. Uh, so there are constraints, but there's ways to go about it. Right, yeah, just going to go for that, once we leave, turn the lights off. Um, and for the admissions, just to touch on that, not that I, you know, shouldn't tell them how to operate. Um, but I will say, most museums have moved towards a free model, both for um, just equal access, right? Um, it's really a donate what you, donate what you can or suggest a donation. Um, and that, I've seen actually raise more money than ticket price. So, and they do, and they do get a lot of donations that way, but no one to bring in donations, no one to bring in money. Um, I don't think it's unreasonable to expect something more than zero dollars for rent. So just a quick uh, clarification, do we know if the building itself is on its own meter? Because it's all our property, is the whole park fountain and everything on one electric heater? You know, the answer to that. It is on the building here, um, the fountain. Are on, there's a DDU meter free uh, monthly, but there's four meters inside and a electrical box is outside of the museum. So I would imagine those other meters go down. That are associated and it's probably with the, with fountain park and one, I don't know, very terminal or something, it doesn't matter, I don't know.
I missed, because we have a separate bill.
But I just, yeah, I didn't know though, that includes lighting in the plaza, uh, you know, the, um, you know, the, the restroom building out back or things like that, so.
I get it.
Just wondering if we have to, it's, it's maybe something we have to be aware of, or we just need to know going into this.
Don't we give them ten grand a year, isn't that one of the line items in budget? In, I'll talk. No, I mean in addition. I remember that coming up in twenty-three.
That other mayor's.
Okay.
Are you negotiating with someone local or do you have to contact the rear Admiral something like?
You have to fly to DC.
We are working with the, uh, yeah, local, not that engineering division, uh, has some say in it. Um, I, I don't know, but I'll be honest, I do not know that a budgetary consideration is really going to be something that we will. Um, I think it would probably result in another long-term extension is probably what we would need. And that's kind of based on that comment, that this is going to be an incorporation that they already have. So that's probably where we will end up if, you know, I go to them and I say, this is what it's going to require, we cannot expect it without kind of change.
Or, or maybe we meet the case that in the future, you know, to, again, there, we, we gotta, there's going to be some give for.
This is a ten-year lease.
I understand, I'm not, I'm not talking about, I'm just talking about, they've given us the building, they've given us the land, like, we, we have to be somewhat sensitive that, 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 that the free rent that was offered at the beginning or agreed upon, that, that we, it's had a good run of it, you know? So, and, because you could also make a case, there's other buildings that have had that deal for longer time.
Well, I, I guess there's one other consideration, but I'm taking it here about the officer here, um, and that is we are coming up on the renewals of our utility service agreements, named hospital. We actually have four separate utility agreements with the Navy. Um, the fact that there's a DDU reading on that meter is interesting to me because often there are um, tie-ins for those agreements.
I don't know what that is.
Um, it probably is already for sure, but I don't know what it is.
Water is just a way of reading the meter and getting the usage of a park if you think.
Okay.
So we, we're not.
Um, so perhaps not. That's what it is, but um, I think there could be a tie-in and um, I think that's something that I will, um, you know, I wish I had thought of that sooner, believe me, uh, it just did not occur to me. Uh, so I'm off to, I think, I, I really appreciate that consideration and that request, I think it's very valid. And going to be going back to them, but before I do that, maybe going back to our agreements, verifying that there are no um, other additional considerations in our PSNS utility water service agreement. Don't believe that there is, but um, just for some regular occasions, I want to make sure. And um, and then, you know, if there is not, I'll definitely be going back to our, you know, local NFT Engineering Division and say, what can you give me? They did give me one change already that I asked for, I was pretty happy with that.
What did they give?
Um. They are managing their climate control system that they reflected and installed, we are not making any math. Um, truly not, so, um, that was the items that, in addition, the CCT. Well, we might be involved in security maintenance of that, on, these are items that they require for their exhibits and their business. So those just fall a little bit outside of us. Um, but I think if you're going to ask about the utilities, very fair, and uh.
And they're paying them on all the DOD locations.
Right.
You know, I wonder if we should call uh, right, Virginia. Jennifer, you had to call.
And I just wanted to just be sensitive, I don't know if there's better ways happening with this museum as well. I, I want to be prepared to receive that feedback if they have that. That's all, that's the only thing.
I have, I have one question for Matt. How come se- security patrols have gone down in price? Is that because that's only for half a year?
Are you looking at twenty-five?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Just for a happy year.
All these numbers, it only probably went through August.
Okay.
We still have four months.
Yep, okay.
Okay, well, thank you. So last thought I had, it might be good to have a bottom line of how much monetary, well, I guess we have that, I'm sorry. Yeah, how much monetary support the city provided here, okay? Yeah, sorry. Yeah.
See, uh, I wish you luck in the negotiation.
Go forth and conquer.
The, the next item, the next two items.
Item twenty. Item C two, public hearing on ordinance recognizing the eighty-six vacation. So right away on twenty-sixth, West the Fennec Bay Drive, with this, right, Knight, engineer, engineer, Hunter Ferguson. All right.
Um, just to continuing of the conversation that we started about a month ago. Um, we set the date for the public hearing, that's going to be October first, and so we're just moving forward with taking care of that, just procedure. Um, I'll have a map up for the meeting and just kind of talk a few, through a few high points for the vacation. And then, and then open it up for public permits and I'm sure that's it.
Okay. Questions from the council? All right, we'll see you next week for the public hearing.
Okay. Right, the next one, you also have another public hearing on the ordinance approving vacation of the North App, of the North South Valley, located between Fifth and Sixth Streets, West of Fennec Bay Avenue. And just do the same thing, put a map up, talk through some of the high points, the Catholic Archbishop has put in for the vacation on the expansion of school campus. And then just open it up for public hearing and if anybody has any comment. Good questions.
Yeah, how much money will we get for that? It says they have to pay for fifty percent.
Fifty percent, it's going to be right about twenty thousand dollars.
Hey?
Woo-hoo.
Another seven ADA ramps built by our crew.
And I will say that is a very fantastic progressive revenue screen, Jane, you said right at the. So many, thank you.
Yes, thank you.
Right, so item C four is a good service agreement with Northwest Boiler LLC for the purchase of a boiler vessel, the wastewater treatment plant, since we're blocking wastewater. Let's have Mr. Bruce here. Bruce, welcome.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Uh, this evening I come to request the purchase of a new hot water vessel for a boiler at the wastewater treatment plant. Uh, the boiler was sold around two thousand nine and the uh, following years has been re-tubed four times, resheated once in twenty twenty. We did it right after I started with City River. Uh, the vessel has failed. Currently, both anaerobic digesters are being heated with a rental boiler to maintain operational continuity and regulatory compliance. Um, a brand-new boiler is scheduled to be included with a large capital project at the plant in the next two to three years. Um, the vessel purchase will enable the city to avoid the cost of using rental boiler at six thousand dollars a month plus the cost of natural gas. Um, which is around eight thousand dollars a month for natural gas versus digestive gas. So um, new boiler, or, well, excuse me, the new uh, vessel, uh, we got a quote from most of the boilers for a hundred and sixty-one thousand, four hundred and twenty dollars with a six to eight week. That's all I have. I'd answer any questions.
Questions, was this at Public Works?
Yes, it was at Public Works, and we thought this was a really good purchase.
Conversation didn't boil over anything?
Well, but he did discuss the difference between a water heater and a vessel.
Yeah, boiler has hundred temperatures, right? You know, a lot of power.
Now, this is the thing that holds all.
This is, this is kind of the equivalent of a hot water tank on the unit, and it's just say, no water holds water. So.
What's that?
It's only job.
It's only job.
One job.
That one job is to heat water and it, it leaks it quickly.
Did you forget to replace the anode or something?
They just go bad there and.
Take away their handle, right out.
Is there anything that we can do to enable you to like order the boiler tonight? The, what, the boiler vessel tonight?
Um.
If there's a six to eight week lead time and it's fifteen hundred bucks a week.
I have a question.
Not, not, they, they can't, that's, that's actually a very good lead time for what this part is.
Yeah, no, I'm just saying, so instead of like waiting until the next council meeting after this.
Um, I, I, I could put in a verbal request to get the process delay, um, we could do that.
Consent.
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 Yeah.
That was easy, thank you.
That was easy, you've got an easy button there.
Thought you'd be in hot water.
Exactly.
Oh. Why do the two of you look at each other when you make a dad joke? I know what's going on, you're in cahoots.
Just for the future, these guys stuck around for almost three mortal hours for something that we all knew would go bit, bit, bit?
Yeah, no, I, I know what you're getting at.
Yeah.
So the, the arrangement with our guest speakers was set at five fifteen, so we just tried to. I get it, no, I understand.
They're working guys.
No, I, I appreciate it.
I know.
Okay. Right, so now we're going to go to general council business for stock, the public works.
Yes, um, well, number one was the Navy Museum lease agreement. We had a very long spirited discussion on it. And we requested the information related to maintenance costs, which uh, staff provided the very next day to us. Um, the next, we discussed the award for the contract of the rapid flashing beacons. Um, after that, we discussed the long-line striping contract. Next up on the agenda was a purchase of the new boiler vessel. After that was the update on the proposed traffic calming policy. And there is no update, they, I think staff thought that we were asking where they were at on specific traffic calming requests. And what they asked really was, was where's the draft traffic calming?
The policy.
So then we were told, we'll get that shortly. And as soon as we get it, we'll distribute it to everybody. And as soon as we get it, we'll distribute it to everybody. Um, and next was the Warren Avenue Bridge funding update. Um, the city lifted, there was a two week stop work order when the, the finances were in question whether or not we could use money that was allocated for construction now. And the answer was yes, we can use some of that. So they're moving forward on that. Um, so a little more paperwork for our staff. And city staff have engaged with, uh, the city lobbyists, Brian McConney, to, to find out A, why they took the money away and didn't reappropriate it like they normally would have. And to help advocate for getting that money back into the project budget this upcoming legislative session.
Um, there are other projects apparently affected this one.
Yeah, Manchester. And that was pretty much it.
Questions for Jane. Look a chance to say any update on Warren or anything from Brian incoming that you know of?
As long as I got back with us enough of the funding, I'm just gonna bring it back to the one million dollars. So that's gonna be in the package.
Okay.
Okay.
Fifteen million dollars, you would take that contribution by. There is by a little show.
Cool. Excellent. Go to audit committee. Oh, go ahead.
Okay. So, uh, at last month's public works committee report, I asked if you guys who are on the committee could, um, talk about how what you've done has, um, followed through on that transportation goals. Or twenty twenty-five goals and priorities. So I don't want to, I don't want to go too late on the initial night of Survivor.
Um, that's right. Start soon.
We need to survive this meeting.
Jane watches Survivor. Um, but do you guys have anything?
General Hospital. No, I don't have a, a full update on that.
Okay.
But we'll put it on the agenda for October for them to give a full report.
Residential street maintenance funding, we talked TBD scoring. Essentially, staff have the full scoring done and I think there's, it's still, still more. I think, uh, review we need to do. Um, Warren Bridge support data K. We've been talking about traffic calling policy we're waiting on, rail network, back to transportation plan waiting on. Uh, the complete streets ordinance update, I have a draft that I sent a draft of the transportation commission to staff. I don't think there were comments, but I can bring that back to full. We can bring that back as a committee to full council.
Uh, prioritize residential streets.
With increased residential street maintenance funding.
Prioritizing actually doing.
That doesn't, it's not in the, yeah. It says prioritize council initiated public works policies.
That's, you know, that's not in our goals and priorities.
Yeah.
Only council initiated ones? Well, when does council get it?
September eighteen prioritize council initiated public works policies.
That's like the trapping calling policy.
What happened to the, the, I, I, I'm sorry, I've asked multiple times for our goals and priorities to be somewhere. Even just like printed, um, but in our actual goals and priorities, it's, uh, prioritize residential street maintenance.
Increase residential street maintenance funding.
Yeah, I know. Well, that's what the transportation benefit is.
Yeah, we're talking.
Conversations.
We're not, so we're no longer in trying to focus on increasing residential street maintenance, but just on getting more money.
We're going in hand.
Yeah, they go together.
For me, I'm looking at, for example, uh, Ron came in earlier this year and said they're going to be fixing all of the ADA ramps along Locktine Eavens, which is a road I drive at least twice a day. Um, and I have, and it's very much not a residential street. And that's going to, that's got to be a big, there's a number of curb of ADA cuts, some of which go directly into a wall, which.
That, those upgrades are because they're repaving and you can't repave that road with old ADA ramps. They have to be to current standards. So that's why they're building them. And they're, they're getting paid from other funding sources, not the residential traffic, um, residential street funds. But they can't, they cannot repave that road until the ADA ramps are up to date.
Okay.
I mean, that's a federal law.
Okay. I give up. Residential streets. I'm all done. Audit committee, I'm ready.
Okay, audit.
Um, audit committee, uh, was supposed to be reviewing the, the, the final draft of the cost benefit comparison of, um, communications manager versus the various contracts that we have with consultants like P R R for the, um, transportation element. Um, and that was produced and it was sent to the committee as an attachment to the calendar invite, which I had never heard of, but now I know that you can do that.
Oh, yeah.
Um, since I, at both I and Jenny and, and I think others just accept the invitation for all twelve months in January and we don't get a second calendar invite. Not all of us had this fifteen page plus document. So, um, to be continued. Yeah, so that's being deferred yet again until October. The next thing we discussed at Great Line was the, the committee's choice of, um, determining what is the net profitability of lot of clear cutting the watershed forest, um, as opposed to doing nothing, you know, doing no clear cutting. Um, considering the salaries and the, the loaded labor rates and a host of other factors. So, um, we went around and around on that and we all came up by, like, after, after we'd been there for over an hour, we all came up with something that everybody agreed on the parameters of doing this. And, uh, Jenny, auditor Sims is beginning on that because there's nothing she can do on the communications manager since none of us are going to be able to give her feedback um, until next month. So it, it was a lot of time and, and then it was over.
Any question?
I get, I, I, I need to read more on what our audit committee is all about and how it functions. I had just, I had thought that council, uh, referred issues to the audit committee for examination, but that's not what happened. It's just that it can't.
It can. It can refer them to the committee.
And then, but, but like this forestry thing, is that going to be helpful to the, the larger conversation that's coming up with, is it? I don't understand. It seems like the audit committee is trying to inform us before a study session or something. I don't know. It's, it's just.
The audit committee is set up by the charter to be an independent body.
Okay.
It has two community members. It has two counselors who are chosen by the president at the beginning of the year. And it has the auditor and it has a CPA. And the audit committee kind of functions as, as it's like it's investigating the administration. So it has no direct connection to the administration. Like there's no, nobody from the administration is on the committee. Um, it's really set up to be doing oversight. I'm going to repeat that while I proposed this, adding this to our work plan at, you know, for at some point to look at it. It was a surprise to me when the majority of the committee chose it as the next thing for the auditor to work on. Um, I, I thought there were other things that we could better be doing. Um, and we went back and forth between a couple of them and they, this was what they wanted to do.
How much money do we spend on audits many other years? Or on auditor?
Twenty-four hours a week.
It's more than twenty-four hours a week or hours down.
I don't know what the budget is.
I signed, I signed a group or time sheet.
I think we need to look at this.
Eight, eight, eight hours.
Yeah.
Yeah. So that's a charter.
Yeah. Yeah, it, it would have to be a charter of them.
Well, actually, yes or no? May, maybe, maybe not. We've had this discussion before on our previous city attorney where the audit, uh, functions could be contracted out, but that's up to interpretation. So that's another night discussion.
But don't we all already get audited?
Yes.
And, and various departments like the police department, fire department.
So just pretend this not rules of procedure, but pretend this is the city charter, city charter that you shall have.
Okay.
Um, okay, this is also something that Jenny and Christine do is they go and do cash counts. They go and do inventories. Um, Jennifer, you brought up at one point was, I thought was a really great point, which was like when you're inventorying drugs, how do you know that they are what is written on them? Like, are you tasting cocaine, I guess?
You don't taste, you test with a strip.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, unless.
I don't know why.
Maybe in case of Beretta.
I want to be on this audit committee forever.
Um, okay, anyway. So there are.
No offense to Mr. Robert Blake.
Regular.
You can offend.
Just regular things that the auditor does like.
Okay.
Um, they look at gun. I've never understood.
Are you done?
Well, I interjected quite a bit. Am I, was that?
It actually is.
I'm all done. I'm done.
All right, good. Okay, finance. All right. Parks fan, Dustin Park. Um, started with parks. Uh, the pros plan update went to Parks Commission last night and there would have been a vote to recommend it. I'm assuming it passed, but I don't check for sure. Um, so assuming it passed, it's now getting released, um, widely public and council. And, uh, it should come to us in study session number twelve and then a public hearing December third and then a second hearing and for adoption vote December seventeenth. So there'll be lots of time for folks to weigh in, including council on, on the pros plan. Uh, talked about a quick change order for Kitsap Lake, pretty routine coming to us on October eighth. Um, this is for the, uh, irrigation issue at Kitsap Lake, and so it's still all in, all in budget. So this is for the actual cost because we prepared the design. Yeah, yeah. So this is the actual change order for the contract, but for the budget amendment, but again, still under budget. Uh, really nice recruitment video put together on getting folks to join the Parks Commission. So, um, Parks Commission should be seven members. There's only five on there right now. Um, uh, so their administration didn't want to add more in the middle of the pros plan update. Uh, but they know they're losing at least one member. Um, I think one of them, uh, Jim McDonald just had his, I think, last meeting. Probably was tonight with the pros plan updating, um, still be around in the community and other members looking to roll off as well. So they're doing a recruitment video to get folks to apply, um, and looking to get back to the full seven, uh, by the start of the year. And then we review the August, uh, financial report and I think the long and short is, you know, we're three and a half million more expenditures in revenue in general fund, which is less than we budgeted for, uh, but still keeping track every month. And that should be, should be live today. And then the final item was looking at the budget calendar. Um, so administration plans to release, uh, updated biennial budget on the fifteenth or sixteenth of October. We'll have a proposed, proposed dates because these aren't finalized yet. Proposed study session on the twenty-second. Proposed budget workshops on the twenty-seventh and thirtieth.
That's already been changed.
Oh, it's already been changed?
Yeah.
Oh, okay. Thank you.
November.
Okay. So it's only your email for.
That's right. We don't have a budget deadline this year because we already have a budget.
We did bring it up. So we are still required even if it's a biennial budget to basically reaffirm, to either at a minimum reaffirm. So we can make changes, um, or, but the state will still be looking for us to reaffirm. It sounds like if that's the case, we can kind of push into December if we need, but, uh, ideally in November still. Oh, and so the last item there was if, uh, we talked through committee wise on things council may be looking for for the budget season, um, historical F T Es, historical, you know, spending. Um, and if there's anything else council wants just to get that in finance hands now so they have time to prepare.
Whatever's not restricted. What's not restricted?
Yeah, we had a whole, we had a list of things.
A list, yeah. If you have any of those type of comments around train.
Yes.
And then show it to me.
What, what Denise called councilmatic decisions? Like what councilmatic decisions are there available to us?
For possible funding.
For. Um, for reducing expenses, for increasing revenue, all that stuff.
That's our, that's the budget.
Yeah, that's the entire budget. So a little history lesson, uh, councilmatic, I don't want to scare anybody out, whatever, but the council can remove positions. Can move F T E.
Yeah.
Yeah. He has done it. Can remove program. So.
Yeah.
It, it's the budget. The mayor presents the budget, but it ultimately is the council, right? So we.
Got.
I think from my understanding, there's not like that it be brought forth, proposed decreases or increases. But what I'm, what I'm hearing, um, so.
You know, I just, I, in all my years, uh, uh, governance has looked to the professional staff to determine, you know, where, where, you know, where cuts should be made. And then they make those recommendations to a board.
Sure, no worries. But remember, we passed a two-year budget.
Right.
So administration provided the two-year budget. We, we voted on it. So it's not like, no wonder.
But if we want to make cuts, can I, in one of these budget meetings, say, okay, administration, I would like, um, a, a ten percent reduction in general fund cost. Can you bring a plan? Uh, uh, next week to have that.
I'm floored to have to do that. We can make those.
Absolutely.
You can request it. They're not implored to do that. We can say this F T E is cut, this program is.
Their best interest. They know the day-to-day operations much fresh than we do, but if they don't, then I guess, I guess it could be dangerous, but the council could just go and do it.
Um, I gotta say, Denise sent a really good email. I don't know if she sent it to everybody on how Spokane redid their budget process and it was wonderful. It was really transparent. It took a good year.
And a city manager.
Of, yeah.
What?
That's a good idea.
But I mean, they went out to the community. First, they had a list of everything they absolutely had to do. And they asked the community, okay, what don't you want us to do? And it was weird. Most people, the lowest percentage of direct services they wanted was the fire department.
Yep. By a lot.
A lot.
It, because we don't cook on fire, right?
They don't know everything that they do.
Yeah.
But, but that was like the initial surveys and then.
That was number one.
They want to say, good, direct Riley is not an accomplice. So that's why I.
Oh, okay.
At the meeting yesterday, uh, Missy led all the budget discussion. She did great.
Survivor started at eight, so I have to watch her rerun.
Oh, no. I'm so sorry.
Can I tell you the plot?
Just tell her how it ends.
The plot's always the same.
They all survive.
Plot is always.
No, they don't all survive.
They all live. Someone could be named head of household, someone will.
No, that's Big Brother. I don't want that.
Yeah, I don't even watch the darn.
Yeah, it's hard to go. Any other reason or another?
No, 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 it's not.
Watching Survivor since nineteen ninety-nine.
Uh, is there any other reasons or other committees that you want to talk about? Before you pack, I have something really serious. So, uh, just reminder, Six Street Act. Okay. Uh, let me finish this. Six Street Act of Transportation Project Presentation, September thirtieth. Okay, Anna.
Uh, real quick, I was on this meeting earlier today, uh, Carl Borg, who was here, Housing and Homeless Program Manager, Kitsap County Department of Human Services, Housing and Homeless Division. They are working on their five-year plan of homelessness and I believe are still accepting the comment. So if anyone is interested, please go to their website. As you all know, I have not been attending other meetings, so I got nothing else.
Right. I'm going to preface this by saying, uh, I do not wish to bring up any particular names or any particular groups. Uh, what I'm commenting on is the public recognition process. Uh, throughout the year, uh, it seems to.
Uh, throughout the year, uh, it seems to be getting more and more tense, in my opinion. The culmination of which heard last Wednesday. And throughout this year, and I think I have full support from you, I said, First Amendment trumps everything. And so I cannot legislate or public recognition is you basically say you have your three minutes. I look at our rules and procedures and just in the beginning on our public recognition, says any member of the public provide an opportunity to address the council mayor and issues not on the agenda, no member of the public shall engage in discussion or comment, which is obscene, a decent libelist, and then goes on to promote sales, et cetera, et cetera. I do not apply that standard. Again, First Amendment. And then under complaints, it says, the rules and procedures, personal complaints, especially those of a derogatory nature against any official or employee. I want to stress the words employee. I'm not really concerned about city council members or the mayor. We signed up for this. We took an office. We decided blah, blah, blah. Shall not be discussed at a council meeting. Citizens wishing to make such complaints shall be instructed that and same should be first processed and handled through the mayor's office. If the citizen feels appropriate action is not often taken, should be properly claimed. And they go to the council president, et cetera, et cetera. Those, I'm sure you've read those before. Here's my dilemma. Got the First Amendment. I do not want to impend. I know, live, listening or whatever. Do not want to hinge on anybody's First Amendment rights. But I'm looking at the public recognition and how do we fix this? Uh, last Wednesday was really bad. I think we're all in agreement. It was really bad. Council members, you had an opportunity to speak up during your time. I respected that. My concern is for our employees. When we allow through having public recognition, a process where everybody can just tee up and go after our employees. I'm not a legal expert. But to me is almost advocating for a hostile environment.
Hmm.
I just want you to think about that. I do not right now, do not come up with uh, a way to prevent what's happening from continuing on in the future. I don't have a miracle thing. I thought of some compromises. I thought of, limit it to one minute. I thought of putting it towards the end. I don't know what the right answer is. I know other cities, you're not going to like hear this, I think. Other cities have gotten rid of public recognition. Other cities have in- instead put in procedures where you can have a two-way dialogue with your councilman, but not maybe the whole council or maybe with the whole council, but it's at a different time. That way you can, if someone really has a complaint, it's more productive than someone coming up and just saying, you know, you're crooked or whatever the, whatever the flavor of the day is. Um, I don't see that being productive. I see that being a waste of time. I do respect anybody's First Amendment rights again for their three minutes. So we could, and, and I'm conflicted with doing this because now we have the shelter issue and I'd like to hear from residents on the shelter issue. So I don't like the timing of this. But I sure the heck don't like the timing of what happened last Wednesday. And I'm fearful it could get worse. And again, I go back to our employees and do we have a right to have our, protect our employees from being in that type of environment? It's been going on since probably the beginning of the year, uh, by certain individuals, uh, against certain staff members. And we allow it. I've allowed it under the First Amendment. I see the clearest thing to do right now is to say, okay, we're gonna not do public recognition for a while until we can figure out what is the best way to take care of this, uh, addresses going forward. Or we can continue to grilling bear it. Or we can move it to one minute, uh, move it towards the end. I'm open to suggestions. And I'm willing to take the heat. If you just give me the head nod. Um, I think I was looking at Kylie at the rules and procedures. I think we have to have a, a resolution out there.
You can change, you have to change the rules by resolution, but I think the council president has the ability to remove things from the agenda under our head subset to one inch. Um, maybe like as a more authority rather than like a formal change of the.
Okay, just, just like, we're gonna curtail this for a while until cooler heads prevail or until we can kind of figure out what we want to do.
Figure out, figure out a safe way. We can, I mean, I guess.
Look at all the.
Say my piece here.
Sure.
Um, when you read the rules and, um, you can tell that, um, the council and the past, when this was adopted, thought of these situations, that there's provisions against employees, there's provisions against employees. Officials. Those are supposed to be addressed to the council president, E P against the council president, to, um, the vice president. And, um, when you run the, run those rules against the First Amendment and keep in mind that public recognition part of our meeting is not required by law. It's a.
Right.
A, a portion of the meeting at Bremerton is, is created. And so, um, personally, that's what we get, the comments that we have. Um, the concern that I think Eric has expressed about employees, I just want to add some additional points to consider is that, um, we have a legal responsibility to protect employees from harassment and hostile workplace conditions, even if it is um, not from other employees or city officials. And, um, prompt action is required. And, um, there's certainly a concern here since it's discretionary on the council's part to have this forum. I think a lot of councilmen feel like it, it's their way of showing that, um, they're listening to the public and stuff, but it's not required. Um, that, um, I have concerns that unless we take action to fix this situation, um, that our employees aren't going to be.
So, uh, one, I guess, Jennifer, and then Anna, then you.
Um, here's another scenario that is also continuing to happen, uh, during public comment is it always comes back to the same issue. There's people who are platforming and accusing and it always comes back to the same issue. Do you have any kind of, I mean, do you have any ability to redirect the conversation if there becomes like in public comment rather than public recognition? Do not speak derogatorily to our city officials, or is that just included in?
Public recognition, I don't believe I can tell them.
Public comment, when you have on an item.
On an item, I have much more.
You can talk about, there's a lot more discretion.
I can say, that's not germane to the topic. You need to get back to whatever the topic is on hand.
That I want to, we're talking about public recognition, but I want to just kind of shore up that detail. Are you willing to do that for our city employees if it starts to become hostile in that way during public comment on agenda items?
Sort of consent agenda.
So be careful when you say.
Consent agenda item.
Be careful when you say hostile. So if they keep, if they make a, a comment and, and it's.
You're.
But if it's germane to the agenda item, I don't think I can restrict their speech.
No, I don't think we want to. And, and to be clear.
Okay.
But the concern that I have, um, we have similar things happen in the past, but we had the most effective, most in our face last week and how that impacts employees. I know it impacted many of you that night and how you, how you felt going home and into the next day and, um, I, 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 I have concerns.
I'm all for a moratorium for a while until we can figure out a rule that we can all live with.
We're still accepting public comments in other ways.
Yeah, you are, of course. Yeah. People can make videos and send them in to the council, um, email, they can write letters, emails, they can meet individually. Many of you are having district meetings. I don't think there's any shortage of opportunity. This council's been very active and, um, so listening public input and a variety of more. Now we need to, um.
And reaching out to people who have had issues and disagreements with the city. We, I think that several, couple of people have done their due diligence.
It's not a recommendation I made by me. I, I'm concerned about creating a safe space.
Anna, then.
So what do we think about Eric simply stating right out loud what he just said here, which is we signed up for this, the seven of us did.
I'm gonna push back on that.
Well, okay, let me just finish it and then you will die. Have every confidence in your ability to push back. Um. And, and just say, look, um, if you want to lay into us, that's one thing, but you know, you cannot, you can't, we're going to mute you if you go after staff.
Can't do that.
You can't do that?
Yeah, whenever you have, when you create a, the, the.
Okay. Wait, do, we learned this from the antisemitic shit that we had to listen to that one time. Yeah.
Okay.
Yep.
All right. I, I, I.
My enthusiasm.
I take it back. I take it back.
I do want to push back, uh, against this, I don't know where it's written. I didn't sign anything. Says I have to put up with that shit. I really didn't. And. And, well, and also, yeah, staff, I love you. They're going to be killing me. Okay, when they come in with a gun. I mean, I was at active shooter to training today. I've worked the industry for many years. I've gone through that training many, many times. I take it very seriously. And I think we all should go through that. And what is happening in our country is connected to what's happening in our chambers.
Yeah.
And we've got to prevent it from going. I, I don't think, I'm not a martyr, President Younger, and I don't, I don't sit up on that dais and say, you can talk about me anytime you want to up here, you know, I, no.
No, wait, again.
No.
Sorry. The First Amendment allows them, as long as we give them the opportunity to do it, we have to allow them to do that.
But there are rules in there that.
But doesn't matter.
The, the constitution trumps city council rules and procedure.
And I, I don't, I wasn't finished earlier.
Go ahead.
We have, we have business to conduct. Okay, we forget that. We're talking about social issues and all of this stuff. I've got business to take care of at that meeting. And I want to hear from staff and others with pertinent information that will help me make that decision. I don't want to listen to a barrage of hate being spewed at me at the beginning of a business meeting. Takes my energy, accepts my energy, and I can't make decent decisions after that as easily. So, you know, I just, I, I'm sorry, I, it was a different time when we made that rule and we brought up public recognition to the beginning of the meeting. It was a much different time that we live in, much different. And there are political, uh, homicides happening every day. So.
Yes.
Yeah.
Well, I don't know about every day, but they're definitely happening. I, and I just want to speak as someone who is, and, and I don't know how many people, how many people here have received like actual death threats. Um, I, I, I don't even know if you have. And just for political activism and, and it's. Yeah, some probably pretty icky stuff. Um, and, uh, there's too many people dying in politics right now. And I'm, I'm, I love to hear from the public and we, I, I'm with Eric. We signed up for taking the heat, for taking public comment, for listening to people be angry and upset, but this is, I'm, this is. I'm, I'm getting a little PTSD triggered from it because I've been scared to go out to my car before because I've received death threats. I've been scared. I've been held up at gunpoint in the past in my life. Um, and there's always the threat of having a gun in my face again. And I don't know how, how, um, unstable people are who come and yell at us. I've had people yell at me in my face and I don't know how far that can go. Um, so I, yeah. And if I'm afraid, I'm sure other people are afraid because I'm kind of a fucking tough cookie. So, anyway. I'm good with a moratorium. I still want to hear from the public. I absolutely love the public. They come and talk to us and share their concerns, but we can make appointments. We can talk to people. We can have coffee. We can get videos.
And comment cards.
Comment cards.
Hours.
Ooh, office hours. Barbed paper you can.
I mean. I have people.
Go ahead.
I have people yell at me all the time and.
Sure.
Take that, but really the big concern is staff.
Yeah.
You know, and I want staff, they don't have to like coming to council meetings. To dread coming to a council meeting because they're providing us information so we can make an informed decision. So I'm all for a moratorium until we can figure out a way to allow public comment again.
And some, and I want to stress, this isn't like, okay, we'll never have public recognition again. We're going to hopefully have a better version of whatever inside. Anne's listening. And I'm tasking her to research what other municipalities are doing. Uh, and we're entirely come up with some solutions that we can better engage with the public, hear their concerns. And hopefully implement them sooner rather than later, but let's see what our options are.
I have another request that I wanted to bring up as we talked about. We used to sometimes have police officers and I don't ask this lightly, you know how I am, but I wonder if there's any.
So I mean, not just like, this isn't the first time that it's crossed my mind. So I've had this discussion before.
Mm-hmm.
And we can have police officer. It's going to require overtime. And he's more than willing. And I feel there's a safety issue. Uh, he'll be there in person.
Always put them on the agenda.
That's how we do it. We don't consent agenda them.
You know, with our resources, it, it doesn't.
Right.
And, and I thought, okay, uh, another option is you have a security guard down there, but I got to tell you. I'd rather have a police officer because you got to be careful. If you have an untrained person that's enforcing the rules, if you get the city in a lot of trouble liability wise, so I, I want a police officer.
I would, I would fake police officers, um, lately, so.
So anyway.
Oh, yeah, that's true.
I'll keep in mind, I know everybody, people are listening or whatever, but it's.
I.
It's fine.
Uh, I just, Michael, so I do support the moratorium. I'm really glad that you brought this up because it was playing pretty heavily on.
Yeah.
And, uh, but I just think that like, like, you know, let's like really try to come up with some, of some better ways. I've even thought about, like, maybe we have a specific public comment only for, you know, or well, housing and homelessness or something, so we can check in or kind of off of the ask, ask council members.
Ask your council.
But maybe, you know, maybe we do our thing up here and then we're available in the lobby for twenty minutes, just a couple of us to just, uh, you know, have a little conversation, but I don't, let's like really brainstorm and like, like break anything that you know about public comment and is there another way to do that, that, that feels better? Um, but I also want to just agree with this idea that like that, you know, really, you know, it, I, I really wish we called it our council business meeting more often, which we, we do that kind of behind the scenes, but we just call it like council meeting. And, you know, it's the business meeting. We're doing the city's business. You know, when we ask for public comment, we ask for comments about city business. People are always, um, you know, um, follow, you know, that so very specifically or they make their own connections on why it's city, uh, city business. And I feel like I had, was going to a point that it made me come.
I think you did. By using the word, you would emphasize that.
City council.
The last, yeah, yeah, just that we're here for business. And maybe we go back to doing business first and then maybe even just as times available or whatever.
So many boards.
Something at the end that could be, uh, some more interactive or something, but also to be honest, I, Wednesday, I seriously thought about just standing up and walking out.
Yeah.
I feel better doing that at the end of a meeting than at the beginning of a meeting.
I walked out and, and what, you know, we can walk out and then there's not a quorum and the meeting has to stop. I'm just saying, that's an option.
Literally thought about grabbing.
You could have come with me.
On my way out.
And come out to the back room and then the quorum is eliminated and you can't have a meeting. I'm just saying, y'all, that's the power that we have. If that shit happens again and you know what shit I'm talking about, I'm asking you to please do something more when that happens.
Okay, Kylie's got a really good suggestion for us.
I'm just going to suggest that I can.
I know emotions are hard, but I've got them.
A resolution for the consent agenda next week that memorializes the moratorium. So the public gets a chance to comment to the council on this issue before it's adopted.
No worries, but in the end it is council rules and procedures. We're respectfully here with the public because it does affect.
No, 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 I know, but I'm saying that, um.
Yeah, no, I think it's.
That's just that way that there would be an opportunity for comment on the.
Yeah. And that's, and that's what our procedures are. It should have a resolution.
Um, I want to be clear on this. Public comment still be derogatory towards us or staff. Right, and any, and any item.
Mm-hmm.
Right.
Right.
I mean, if, if something comes up and, you know, someone wants to I mean, that any staff member they want to blame an item on a staff member, we want to bring it up. So this, stopping public recognition, I don't think it's lightly. Um, it doesn't stop that.
That's right.
If somebody wants to find a way to, to be mean to it, I'm going to say more than mean, right? Hostile, um, derogatory.
Derogatory.
Yeah, horrible language, um, to a staff member. I'm sure they can find a way to tie it to a, to an agenda item. So, I don't know. I also view public recognition as a bit of a steam battle. So, I don't know. Also, the public recognition is a bit of a steam valve. Um, it's not fun for anybody. It's pretty flippable. We gotta listen to, put up with. But it is a steam valve to people, so I. Yeah, this is not an easy.
That's why I think a moratorium is the best way, so, and research how other cities are.
Target moving to the, moving to the end, which it used to be. I mean, we really, like, really purposely. We want, somebody, somebody had a, you know, gosh, I really want to bring a pothole to this attention or, you know, I haven't seen you guys discuss, you know, chicken toes in the wild. I really wish you would. Uh, that was really nice. They could go to the front of the meeting.
That's right. I, I get what Jeff's saying. I mean, I, I, I do, I do understand. I, I think it's a big deal to take away public comment. Um, and so many of our other meetings hold it to the end, but folk, right now, these folks that are intense are gonna wait till the end. And it's gonna continue the problem, so.
Well, right now, they won't.
They're gonna, they're gonna wait. I do that whole hand raising thing. It's, it's so weird. I know, I'm sorry about that. Um, I, Michael, you and Eric remember how many, many times I waited for public recognition when it was at the end of the agenda and, you know, and really agitated for it to be moved up. And I still think that that's, uh, a good place. I, a very vivid memory to me is the woman who came in and she had gone through every proper channel and she had been able to do nothing about these guys who were doing late night, high-speed donuts at Orbit and Fifteenth right in front of her house with customized mufflers blaring. And that, that appearance in front of council got some action going. So I, I do not want to get rid of public recognition forever. Almost done. And I really don't want to put it to the end because I, I know that woman. She's my constituent. She works a job and then she takes care of her grandkids and she's got a full plate. Okay, hold on.
How long?
Yeah, Kylie, I'm sorry.
How long for a moratorium?
And also add agenda item off topic around under our procedures too. So if you have had a constituent who wants to, and you want to bring it to the council that was not.
Yeah.
No, I don't.
How long should we have the moratorium? I mean, I'm not asking you, uh, the council.
Thirty days?
How about the end of the year?
You have like four years. I, I don't know, because if we put it too short and then we'll have to revisit this again. So you could have it December thirty first, and if we came up with, uh, some solutions that we like, then we could cut it short. Or we could reinstitute whatever.
Well, and the new council members can weigh in after, in January.
So you guys refer for next week. Are you okay if we put December thirty first?
I think that's kind of too long.
We were good.
It's only two months.
The election will be certified by the, by November twenty something, right?
Yeah, but they don't get installed.
Right, but they could weigh it.
Step down.
Well, the, yeah. I think in six weeks, we should have enough information to make a decision.
All right, so after Thanksgiving, because that, that's pretty much six weeks.
You mentioned something about a proposed resolution, but didn't you say council president make the decision unilaterally?
I think, yeah, it can, but I, I, the council could also pass a resolution, um, for the moratorium so that there's a writing and whereas it's around twelve. And the public has a chance to comment for a study session. Um, it's, uh, implemented and.
I think, I think it's best to have the resolution, uh, so we can explain why we're doing this.
Yep.
I think it's best.
Yeah.
And then is this, uh, something that we're gonna talk about at the briefing and it's gonna be voted on and the consent, how are we gonna do this?
I'll work on the resolution with, um, Anne and Eric and Jane and they'll just put it in the packet and then it, um.
Open to general business.
Yeah.
What council members can talk about.
Yeah.
Just like you did tonight. If you want, you don't have. Or, I mean, do we want to have a study session? Or, you know, so I'm sorry, Michael, you're more affected than I was, but we gotta address this.
Sure.
So I want to address it on Wednesday.
Yeah, I don't want to wait for another study.
Yeah, yeah.
No.
But then we will have public recognition.
Time out. What I'm, what I'm saying is that next Wednesday, we announce the moratorium, maybe take some comment on that. And then we don't, I don't want to, I don't necessarily want to talk about it next Wednesday. I'd like to talk about it at this table in two weeks, you know, and, and use the time of the moratorium to hash out new ideas. So I'm all for a moratorium. I, I, I don't want to have a public discussion about it. So we can, I guess.
But here, now that, now that we're thinking about this, so if, if we, if you don't allow me to do it by presidential action, you want to have a resolution and you'll have public recognition next week because that goes first.
No, you can change the order of the agenda, of course.
Okay, so then we can have the resolution and then if it passes, we don't have public recognition.
So what else is on the agenda for next, what's gonna be general business next week?
So we have two public hearings.
Public hearings, yeah, the, the early vacation.
I really want to hear people about the housing, about the shelter.
But see, we do have that option though. We can say.
Agenda item. Say, we're, we're putting, you know, we had this study session, we would like.
Can we do that? Can we move the public recognition to the end of the meeting for to next week and then come back at the study session?
It should do a public comment for.
We can, we can say we're only doing public comment on the shelter. I like the idea of a moratorium on public recognition.
I want to talk about the shelter and I blame X, Y, Z group of people.
Then Eric can say not germane.
Well, that's, that's, that's a fine line.
Very fine line, right?
Right. It's like, we know what you're saying, dude.
We're taking action. We're taking action and letting people know that it's not acceptable.
I think, I think having comment cards for people to, to write on is a really, I mean, they won't let you talk at the school board unless you write what your question's gonna be.
I know.
How about this?
And you have to give your address.
It, it's good, Ian Lee. Could you trust Kylie, Jane, I, and Anne to come up with whether we can do a resolution or we're just gonna let, we just take it off.
Yeah, I defer to you as president.
And then, and then we'll, we'll work out with whatever we'll do. You'll see it on the.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for bringing up a very difficult.
Sounds good.
Yeah.
All right, so a reminder, next council meeting, speaking of which, we'll do, first Sunday at five thirty PM, first floor meeting chambers, Normdick's government center. Public is invited to attend in person or remotely, but anyone who wishes to speak during public recognition, if there is. Via Zoom, must submit their request to the city park by calling three six zero four seven three five three two three at least twenty-four hours prior to meeting this meeting.